I didn't go to work today.
Work session to order Wednesday, February fifth, the time is one P M. I'd like to excuse Council Carlsen is in Salem today. So, we're gonna open it up for visitor comments. Okay, get right on with the agenda.
Nope, there's visitor comments.
Sorry, I didn't know I had to.
Come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Amelia Ponti. This is Amanda. Um, we. Um, thank you for having us. Um, we're here with Wildflower Play Collective. We're a new nonprofit in town and we have finally found a location. And it is, um, one, six, five, North Eleventh Street where the tecon was. And, um, so we're planning to sign our lease this week. And we are here because that location is mixed use and requires a conditional use permit for, um, for our use. We are, um, working off of a grant from the Columbia Pacific State Bureau. And we're wondering if it would be possible to waive the, um, conditional use permit fee, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And, um, so I was wondering, um, if you want more information about our program? Would that be helpful?
Sure, did you say you were a nonprofit?
We're a nonprofit. We, um, got our five oh one C three status in, um, August. And we are a community focused organization. We are going to be a place where families with young children can just drop in. It's, um, membership based, so they can come, um, between like eight A M. and eight P M., whatever fits their schedule and play. And, um, there'll be trains and blocks and, um, a place structure and a room for infants. And it's just going to be a place other than McDonald's that people can go with their kids. And, um, currently, we're, um, all volunteers and we started this so that we could have a place to bring our own small children instead of driving to Portland. And we're modeling our organization after an existing organization that's in, uh, North Portland, that's been there for eleven years. And, um, we're called Wildflower Play Collective.
Amelia, uh, good to see you. Congratulations on your grant. You said you were working on it as a grant. And you have the grant, uh, ascertained, do you have that?
Yeah, we got it in September.
Okay.
And it's to, it's a grant specifically to launch our program here.
And is it a continuous, will it be a continuous grant throughout the years?
Um, it's possible. We need to reapply and tell them what we need the grant for. But right now, the part of our grant is covering memberships for families with organ health.
And you see, uh, the five hundred and thirty-eight dollars conditional use permit, is that an annual fee or is that a one-time fee?
It's a one-time fee. And, um, Jacob is here to, oh, hi, to answer any questions about that. He's been really helpful in our process.
So, I'll, I'll tell the story a little bit. They've been looking for a property. I mean, we've been working with them for months. Basically, you know, they asked us about a certain property. And, um, for a lot of them, they asked about, I think it's been about six, if I remember right, somewhere around there. So, a lot of them, you know, it's, is, is our building official the bad guy or am I the bad guy, you know, depending on the circumstances of the site? And, and a lot of them, I wasn't the bad guy. I could say, nope, no land use issues. Then they, this, they found this place in mixed use and technically it requires a conditioning use permit. They're concerned about the time and expense. The time thing, I think we got some things worked out, uh, that'll work out for them. But of course, the expense is something we have here. Council, it's, it's a land use fee. It's not one that the state says you can't waive or reduce. So basically, uh, your options are yay, nay, or partial. And it's a land use fee out of the general fund. So it's not like the building department where they depend on, um, their funds.
That's good to know, thank you. Yay, nay, or partial? So this facility, is it like a, um, a place where, you know, people need babysitting? Babysitting or?
No, it's, it's, um, not childcare. It is, um, kind of more like, uh, if you've been to the Portland Children's Museum where you can just go in with your kids and you can let them play. You could meet another, um, mom there for a play date, another parent there. And, um, and the kids can play and you can socialize a lot of, another part of our mission really is to, um, provide resources for families. So isolation is something that parents of small children really struggle with and suffer from. And so we're also working to help parents to not just go isolated, by giving them a place they can go.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great program. How much is your membership? Is that yet?
Well, it will be sliding scale. So, um, if families can, um, do a work trade, then we'll work with them on that. If they can't pay anything, we have a, a pool in our grant for covering families that they can't afford anything. And then, yeah, we'll offer several different tiers based on the amount of kids and the amount of time they think they'll use it.
So it will serve all of them?
It will serve all families, yes, yeah.
I guess that's where I was going.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Just to, uh, pre-call for the council. Amelia's been here before and she asked if, uh, the city, if you permission to use the parks in the Bronx Park?
Oh, yeah.
As kind of your, um, as your outreach and, uh, your setting for your program. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to remind the council that Amelia is no stranger to coming to the council and working with the city.
I started the Free Forest School.
Are there gonna be any other fees, Jacob?
Um, we know that, uh, building code is, uh, has a clean bill of health, assuming some other things don't happen. And then, uh, because they're nonprofit, I don't believe there's a business license fee. So my understanding, at least in my silo and talking to the other silos, there's always that disclaimer, is that, uh, this is the only bureaucracy fee at this time for them. And it's one, and it is a one-time fee for the life of the use.
Council, what are you thinking?
We need them here.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that would waive the fees. Second?
Okay, motion's been made, second, to waive the fees. All in favor?
All right.
opposed? Okay, it's unanimous.
Wow, thank you so much. Really excited to be here and, um, we're really excited to serve our community.
Yep, I think it's, more importantly, just as equally important, I think it's very beneficial to the parents as well, not just the kid.
Benefit to the community.
Yep.
Very needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other visitor comments? Thank you, Jacob. Okay, annual report from City Forester Brett Keller, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Brett Keller. I'm with Mason, Bruce and Gerard. We're a, um, solely a forestry firm out of Portland, been around almost a hundred years. And we've been, uh, managing the city of St. Helens Milton Creek Watershed since two thousand and six. In review of two thousand and nineteen, uh, we completed the section twenty-eight timber sale, uh, it was fifty-two acres. Uh, we sold that sale actually in two thousand and eighteen at the peak of that historically high log market. And, uh, the city ended up with about eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars off the sale. Uh, we didn't put on the sheet here. We are currently, as we speak, uh, reforesting that, that unit. So that'll be planted, uh, by the first of next week. And reforested with about twenty-five thousand trees, so, uh, that's, that's looking good. Um, the main, uh, project besides the timber sale, we finished last year was slashing, um, a unit of, so it was about sixty-five acres. You can see on page five of what I provided, um, in yellow, um, on the map is that slashing area. And that slashing is just, uh, hand cutting of, of the bigger brush, fine maple and Scotch broom. It's even with the seedlings. Um, and it's a, it's a way to control the competition without using any herbicides. So we generally only in emergency situations use any spray out there. We treat everything with handwork, so.
Is that protected also from, um, the deer grazing on the seedlings and that kind of thing? You have, what, you have elk tubes and that kind of thing?
We haven't had to do that too much. I think you have enough public activity out there and that, of course, you open it up for hunting in the fall. We haven't had real intense concentrations of browse from deer or elk, um, on the property. So that's, that's something we haven't had to tackle much. There's always gonna be a certain amount of browse, but nothing that's wiped out.
They're all down in my pear orchard.
Exactly. Right. So, uh, that went well. The main thing at this point, have planted, or planned for, uh, two thousand and twenty is pre-commercial thinning of a sixty-five acre area. That's also shown on, on the map in the north, uh, end of the property. A twenty-year-old stand, uh, currently it's overstocked with about four hundred trees per acre and following thinning would be, uh, reduced to two hundred to two hundred and fifty trees per acre. Uh, so those trees that are remaining would recapture the site and, and by thinning that you just, um, prevent the stand from slowing down and maintaining, you know, vigorous growth, going forward. So we've done a lot of that since two thousand and six. There've been quite a harvesting leading up to when we took over the management. And, and so as we've moved towards trying to have a sustainable, um, you know, annual program, it's important to, to keep on top of these, these young stands. Easy to get them planted and full of trees, but then need to, to maintain them so they're growing productively. Looking towards, um, at the current sawlog market, um, current prices have been real flat last year or so. There's still real good prices. Um, not gonna see the two thousand and eighteen prices for probably another twenty years or something, but we're still seeing, um, prices in the range of six to seven hundred dollars per thousand board feet in the local area for the, the smaller sawlog that the, the city owns. Uh, the current trend in terms of local sawmills are, you know, they're at full capacity with inventories. Most of the mills that would fit the St. Helens type cut the dimension lumber product, like two-by-fours, two-by-sixes, studs, that kind of thing. And that market, of course, is, uh, you know, largely dependent on the, the housing market, which has been real good and, uh, stable, has even come up some in the last few months. So until lumber market, or until lumber prices increase, those log prices should, should remain at those levels, you know, going forward here. It's hard to say a year or two down the road what happens, but that's what we're forecasting for this year is they'll, you should see that six to seven hundred dollar price, six to seven hundred dollar price going forward. Current, current inventory of, of St. Helens, uh, timber features those, uh, kind of logs. And so if you sold a stumpage sale right now, you'd see a conservative estimate at somewhere around five hundred dollars per thousand board feet, uh, stumpage, which would be net of the logging. So, um, not as much as you got on the last one, but still, you know, real good price, currently. Future outlook, um, you can see if you'd, if, if I got graphs from the last five years and put them up, you'd see how these, these, the, the green bar in the forty-plus year category on the graph has come up. We're getting closer to having a little more of a regulated forest where we have an even distribution of the, of the age classes across the forest, which is good as we move towards, you know, being able to harvest just the growth each year sustainably. So, uh, that's real neat to see that progression. Uh, there's about twenty-one hundred acres of available, uh, commercial forest land, in the watershed. That's net of roads and, uh, forest areas and riparian areas and, um, stream buffers. Of that twenty-one hundred acres, there's about three hundred and thirty-odd acres of timber age forty and greater. And you can see within five to ten years, you know, another four hundred acres will move into that forty-plus category as we get more regulated and, um, more of an even distribution of ages. And so I've been talking about it for, you know, within five years, five to ten years, we're kinda, uh, to that point now where, where you can look at a, an annual or at least semi-annual, uh, harvest program that you can count on, uh, budget for. The advantage of maybe a semi-annual program, all considered equal, would just be, you know, efficiency in terms of, um, management costs and, you know, uh, uh, even marketing and the value of the timber could be more attractive to sell twice as much, less often to buyers than, um, right now. So, um, right now of that three hundred and thirty acres, there's a little over two hundred acres that are readily available for harvest. You can see that on page six on the map. Most of that's in that, for all of this, uh, right now is in the southern block of the property. You can see, uh, the north part of the map there, that white piece is what we just harvested and are cutting right now. So, that's where the opportunities are currently. I recommend, uh, as long as we're at this normal level, uh, at the, in your average for, um, log prices, you know, selling one of those stands in the next few years, as we move towards this, this annual sustainable harvest program.
I think, uh, me personally, you know, we have a lot of projects. It's been a semi-annual year, eighteen, this will be twenty. I think, me personally, I would note that, the prices seem to be pretty easy hit.
Oh, yeah.
Moving with a, uh, cut. So we have some money available for future projects. Serve our systems well to cut now and utilize that money wisely. Absolutely. Just me, I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Well, you're the barometer in terms of timber prices and, uh, those issues. You know, we, we rely strongly on your recommendations and, uh, I think that's important. And, uh, mayor sees in our budget that, um, more aggressive, uh, cutting and harvesting might be a plus to the city at this point. So, um, that's, that's kinda my opinion, but I, while you're here, I do wanna ask you a question. The past ten years, we've been talking, um, quite a bit about the recreation opportunities of that, of that area. Uh, I just wanted to ask you, uh, do you feel that possibly, uh, those recreation endeavors, uh, would get in a, in a, in a way or in a path of efficient and effective logging practices?
Um, I don't, I don't think so. I did speak with the, there's this effort, I don't know where that's at now, with the county and the trail system up there.
Yeah, that's it.
Casey, you talked to him?
Yeah, and he, and we talked about, and he expressed that, you know, that trails could move around. I mean, like, like that slashing area is, I looked later, is right where some of the trails would be. We have a stand now that's like ten years old. So in forty years, if we said, hey, it's, that stand's, um, available for harvest. Well, I guess what he was saying is it wouldn't exclude, it's not like, oh, okay, now that we've already set aside areas for streams and, um, reserve areas, then the trail system wouldn't become another reserve area. That'd be, that'd be the, the question for the council.
That was a big part of this council.
You know, that'd be the value decision. Do we go with trails versus the marketable timber? Well, it didn't sound to him like, or sound, um, in talking to him, that, that'd be.
They know it's a working tree farm.
Right.
That we intend for it to be, it's, yes.
I want to get that on your opinion on public record, uh, as, as a person who oversees that harvest, uh, how you felt about that and what your perspective is. And I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, and we can, like, we worked around, uh, working with folks and we, and are, would consider in these harvests near the reservoir, um, you know, taking into consideration the fact that folks are using that at the same time we're in there, you know, in terms of an expanded buffer. I think Ginny one time, a few years ago, brought up, hey, we wanna have a little more of a buffer around the lake there. Those folks are using it. No, I think so. I think we can, I think it's fine with that, but.
Keith, what do you think?
That was kinda my, my thing was, first of all, if you, yeah, if you've talked to Casey or not, whatnot, and the other part was kinda just, um, you know, I'm sure there's probably other entities that are doing this type of stuff, so that there may be programs out there. I don't know if you hear of any other, you know, like, uh, obviously there's, there's probably gonna be volunteers up there building trails and stuff and whatnot. So, and we build into the process sort of, you know, they help maintain the whole piece, you know, whatnot. If there needs to be, you know, other work done or, while they're doing work, you know, maybe do this piece of work too. Whatever makes it all blend together and whatnot, because you're right, yeah. And, you know, that's one of the things we're gonna have to be specific about is, well, even though you're building this trail today, someday it may not be accessible because of logging or, or a lot, so.
Or what, the view of what your, you know, along the trail may change. The trail will be there. You can keep the trail there, but, but you drive, riding through a little different landscape.
Anyway, I'm sure there's other, you know, public entities that have kinda gone through this, I'm hoping anyway, you know, so that we can maybe follow suit and see what best practices are and, and things like that. So that's just what I was kinda aware of.
So what do you think about the cut?
No.
That's why I was, yeah, I was.
If there's timber out there that we can cut, yeah, I mean, we need the money now, that's for sure.
Those are your comments?
Well, don't know a whole lot about trees. Uh, the one question, if trails and people don't hurt trees, not a problem. Uh, the one nice thing, if we have people out there that knows this is our ground and their ground too, it makes life a lot easier that we're taking care of the wilds, which we've gotten. And we also know if we got people in there watching, a lot of bad things don't happen. Or they, you know, people do cause some bad things, but it takes better care of the land if we got the public out there looking at it. And so it's really up to you. You know more about cutting trees and making money than I do.
And if you do, you end up with more stakeholders, you get more exposure to even the management. I've run into folks out there that were just convinced that they saw slash piles after we cut in two thousand and ten. I said, well, five years you won't see them, it'll be all little trees. He said, well, we'll see. Now he can say that.
You're right.
They're, they're, you know, it's reforested and see how the working forest, uh, works out there. So that's the other advantage that was the trail, see, law and people in there for hunting, law and people into the, um, the reservoir, you know, except for the fire season or something. Does you have more, people have a sense of ownership in the, in the land, you know?
Last time you were here, I think we had two areas that we could cut and we chose one. Are we gonna go after that one then? Is that the idea?
And of course, there were, for, for years, there were just, there were just barely two. Well, now there's four, you know? In five more years, there'll be eight areas, you know? We're moving into, there was just a big hiatus there. Um, there'd been a lot of cutting, I think in the early two thousands. And then we did a big cut with, generally revenue for the, the, um, the river, river project, you know? So we're coming out of that hiatus here with more and more opportunities.
Yeah, looks good.
We have a substantial amount of information from the county, from you, from all the key players and stakeholders, uh, with that property up there. I think it's, uh, I think it's really high time that the council gets together and establishes a mission statement, uh, some core values and some goals for that area so that, so our public knows what's going on. Everyone knows what, what that property is doing and what it's all about. So I, I appreciate that and that's, maybe we can put that on a retreat or something so that we can talk more effectively about it and so that our public knows. Thank you.
So it sounds like you got a go-ahead from us, is what I gather a census on moving forward with that cut.
So we look to, something out for bid real, real quick and open bids next month, so. I'll, I'll work with you. Work with you on that, so. All right, any more questions? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and go, uh, down to Dee and I'm gonna have the, uh, request for support from the St. Helens Choir, Leonis, Eric Sterns and company. You guys can come up if you want.
Mr. Mayor, council, forgive me, I apologize, I have sinus infection.
It's not, I'm here, no problem.
My apologies, I wouldn't normally bring Starbuns, but it's the tea that allows my throat to be heard. Um, my name is Eric Sterns. Uh, and then I brought with me, uh, five students from the high school.
Rockin'.
Thank you for having us today.
Just give me a second.
Oh, no, that's okay.
It's kinda my fault because I wanted.
I actually just sent Kathy an email, so.
Did you?
Yeah. Uh, so our, uh, I teach choir at the high school and this is my fourth year here in St. Helens. Uh, I'm a St. Helens resident, live up on Robinette Road, love, love the area, love being here. My wife's a, uh, please don't hold it against her, she's the school principal down in Scappus, so try, try not to hold it against her. We, we love the community though, this is, this is home. Recently, our choir had a pretty singular honor bestowed upon us. If you see on the screen, uh, we've been invited to this international, the nineteenth international choral cathaumiu. Um, in, it's a First Nation word that literally means coming together. Uh, they bring thirty of the top choirs from around the world together in B.C. Uh, it's in Powell River, B.C., which is, you have to take two ferries to get there. It's this tiny little community, single screen movie theater, six thousand seat hockey arena because it's Canada and, you know, that's, they, they have their priorities straight. But it's, uh, it's this beautiful, beautiful festival, uh, where we are the first public high school chorus to be selected in at least twelve years. Uh, we might, that's as far back as I can check. Uh, most of the time, the people that get selected for this are all-star groups. Um, if you're familiar with, like, sports teams that are all-star teams, they, they pull kids from a surrounding area and then they get the best of the best and, and that's, that's what you get. Well, you can see, I mean, these groups that go, uh, they're very colorful, they, they come from, uh, different countries all around the world. I went as a, as a grad student in two thousand and fourteen, uh, and a choir from, I think, Slovenia won that year. It was, it was beautiful though. I mean, it, it's the most gorgeous festival and our kids get an opportunity to, um, sing in the choir of a thousand voices, which is every day, in addition to the competition and the concerts that we are participating in ourselves, every day around one o'clock, they have a joint rehearsal with everyone. It's mandatory and you're sitting next to someone from another country, the only common language you have is the sheet music that's in front of you. And at the end of the festival, you can see that picture right there, that's the end of the festival there. It's a night of, uh, six thousand people and the choir of a thousand voices sings for the audience and. It's a night of six thousand people, and the choir of a thousand voices sings for the audience, and our kids get an opportunity to be partners with people from all over the world. They become international citizens as a result of this. It's a, it's a really fascinating, unique opportunity, and it's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime type thing. We auditioned a couple of years ago, didn't make it in, and honestly, I wasn't sure that we would make it in, but we've worked really hard, and we submitted an audition video this year. Excuse me, and we were fortunate to be selected. I'm very proud of my kids, very proud of them. I did bring them with me, they, they would like to talk to you at some point and just tell you what it means to them. But I want to just outline, we are asking for support, and we are, of course, asking for your blessings as we go. We're here to represent our city, our state, and our country. We're one of probably three choirs from the United States that will be there, the rest will be international choruses. So it's, you know, it's a singular honor. The opening night ceremonies are like the Olympics, you parade in under your flag, they're playing your national anthem as you come in. It's, it's a really fun time for the kids, and they, there's quite a bit of national pride. But the, the cost to us is approximately thirty-six thousand dollars to get forty-five people there and back. But that's eight days of all food, all lodging, everything, even transportation, all of that's covered. And, you know, the answer's always know if you don't ask, so I'm gonna ask for support from our city, at whatever level you feel comfortable doing that, if you want to give me thirty-six thousand dollars right now. But more importantly, I, I think, I know my students, it was their choice to try and reach out to you as a council because they are very proud of being from St. Helens and being selected for something like this. So I'm gonna let them come up and speak. Savannah, would you like to?
Hello, I'm Savannah Manning. I am a senior at Seans High School, and I'm so thankful I've been a part of the choir program these last four years. My high school experience has been gloomy for a while. I was really depressed and down throughout these last four years due to family circumstances that were out of my control. The choir program and the way the music impacted my life positively gave me a lot of hope. But here lifted me up, the choir program lifted me up, and the music brought peace and joy to my life. I've been able to realize that I can follow my dreams to become a dental hygienist and a professional dancer as well. The international competition that my choir will be traveling to means so much to each and every one of us. For me, I'm just excited to see and be a part of something that brings together people from different families, backgrounds, religions, and nations. To be a part of something that brings everyone together instead of tearing them down is so important to me, especially today. I'm extremely proud, I am able to be, I'm extremely proud I am able to have this opportunity to represent not only my country and my state, but also the city of St. Helens. I'm so blessed and thankful to have been a part of this choir program, and I'm so excited we have been invited to a life, to a life-changing, once-in-a-time, international opportunity. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Beth. I've been a member of Coral Leonis for two years. I'm a St. Helens High School junior. Ever since I have joined choir, my social life and life in general has changed drastically. As a freshman, I was very closed off, I didn't have many friends, and I had really, really bad social anxiety. Now, two years later, I have a whole family within my section in my choir, I am very open, and I'm more outgoing, and it's all because of this. Now, getting accepted into Cathamiu has, it just means so much to both me and our choir. We've been working so hard for years to get in, and we finally made it. And we've been one of the twelve best choirs in the state for the past four years, we've been going to the state consecutively. We have gone to choir competitions in different states, including our upcoming San Francisco trip with both the band and two of our choirs. We've sent multiple students to statewide competitions and workshops, and Andrew has, just came back from one called Allstate. And we've sent a student in the past two years, well, one student a couple of years ago, to an all-nation choir, which has two hundred and fifty of the best singers in the nation, down for a weekend. Our choir has achieved so much in only four years. Along with representing our town and, and county, we'd be representing our state and our nation. And we will be one of the two to three other choirs from the U.S., which is an amazing opportunity because it doesn't happen that often. This competition only happens every two years, and we will be the only high school choir competing, which is an amazing opportunity. This trip will be the greatest part of my high school career, thanks to our S.H.H.S. choir and city. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Pletch, and I am a sophomore in high school. This is my second year in Coral Leonis. Me, being in Coral Leonis means I have not only a family at home, but a bigger family at school to fall back on. And, well, music to me, I've been studying music since second grade, doing piano and some singing, but music to me is just part of my life. I've, I don't know, I've achieved a lot during my music career. I'm currently a level nine syllabus in piano, looking to pass into my tenth. But all in all, being in a choir, you just have a lot of friends, and being in, accepted into Cathamiu, Canada, it'll be my first time going out of the country, and it's just a good experience to be with all these people from around the world, and our choir is, like, really lucky to be here.
Thank you, Andrew.
Hello, I'm Jacob, or Jacob Madsen. I've been a member of Coral Leonis for a year and a half now, and I feel like this is a great opportunity for our school, or just our town, to be recognized for the amazing things that is happening at our high school. Like, we're, I'd like to say that we're a very high-quality choir, and that there's a lot of other things that are coming out of our high school that are high-quality. But I feel like this is just a great opportunity for us to kind of get the recogni- recog- uh, sorry, recognition of just our town and all the great people in it. And I feel like it would be kind of cool having something more than just Halloween town to have our town, you know, and board.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Excuse me, my speech is on my phone. I wrote it during my algebra two class.
I will tell your teacher.
So my name is Tacey McCallum, I'm a junior. I kind of have a leadership position in the choir. I'm known as the destroyer of confusion, that's my official title. I'm kind of just kind of, I'm Mr. Stern's helper. I remind people that they need, uh, they're, what they need for the next day or when we go to festivals, so. I joined my first choir in the fifth grade. When it was time to choose our classes for seventh grade, I decided to go for choir instead of band. And in eighth grade, I chose choir again, and that was the year Mr. Sterns came to St. Helens as the choir director for both middle school and the high school. He quickly became one of my favorite teachers, and his choir class was one of the few things that made me happy that year, because my family was going through some very hard times. At the end of that year, I was accepted into Coral Leonis, the choir that I had looked up to for two years, and that was the year that they got ninth in state. And I anxiously waited for my first day of high school choir. But since I've joined, the choir has endured ups and downs, but I, I'm very proud to be able to become. Now, as a junior and as the destroyer of confusion, I've been a part of this choir for nearly three years. I've found many of my closest friends, including Jacob and Grace, and it's become one of, it's become one of our second family. Coral Leonis has been a place of welcome and great pride. We have accomplished many things I never thought possible. We have performed at the grotto in Portland, gotten top scores in almost every single one of our festivals. We've won second place in our league, and we've been one of the top twelve choirs in the state for the past four years. Now we have been accepted into one of the biggest choir festivals in the world. We'll be proudly representing not only our school and our city, but our state and our country.
Order of confusion. I'd just like to state for the record, I'm very proud of these kids for saying those things. I just like to state how proud I am of these guys. Cathamiu's a singularly unique festival. If you could see right here, it's hard to see here, the winning choir, so you can win in a bunch of different categories, we'll be competing in three categories. Youth chorus, contemporary music, and small-chamber ensemble. The winners from each of those categories compete on the final night to be named Choir of the World. Choir of the World takes home a totem pole, which sounds really strange, but the First Nation elders have designed one every year for this, or every other year for this festival, and then they come to wherever, excuse me, wherever the winning chorus is from, and they install it and bless it in this amazing ceremony. So, you know, I don't know if we're gonna win. I don't, to be honest, I don't care. I, I, listen, I want my kids to do the best possible job they could do, I want them to, to be proud of the, of the effort they've put in there, and I want them to rep- represent themselves well. If we win something, cool, if we don't, they know what the score is, because I've trained them since day one that it's about excellence, not about winning. And so that's what, that's why we're there. So we would ask for your support. Of course, you know, I leave it up to you to decide what level you'd like to do that at, but we would appreciate your support in some way.
Eric, what's the timeline on this?
We, this was a, a last-minute ad, we're actually leaving June twenty-eighth, and we come back July fifth.
Is there a time when you have to have the money raised by, by May?
Yes, the end of May.
Is that a go or no-go?
Uh, yeah, pretty much. It's a go or no-go by the end of May, because we have to have our festival fees paid by then. And we're, and believe me when I tell you, we're doing quite a bit of fundraising between now and then.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't just, myself, I'd like to see maybe we kind of delay our decision until we see where you're at.
Sure, sure.
And I would encourage you to send a letter or a video or whatever you want to our governor. I will be talking to Betsy after this and see if we can push this up the chain.
Good.
I would even send one to Washington, because you're representing our country.
That's a good point, yeah. We, we have, I reached out to Betsy's office the other day, and they reached out to me asking if we'd be interested in singing for the senate, which we've done before, that's a, that's a thing we've done before. I think, looking ahead at fundraising, of course, and this is a short turnaround, and we know this.
Right.
It was a last-minute, as a matter of fact.
Things always are.
Yeah, they are, you know, and we didn't plan on getting in.
Right.
And we planned a trip to San Francisco instead, so we're actually hitting San Francisco in April, and then I still have to plan for this one, which oddly enough.
Actually, may, it's a little bit of time.
Yeah, it does, it does, so, so, yes, I, I would be happy to, I mean, who, my question when I think about Washington is, where do I go? I mean, who, you know, who would I, who would I reach out to in Washington? I've tried getting my kids to say.
Well, we have two senators that go there often. That's where I'd start at.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Oh, you're right, it is a mess.
Yeah.
I would like to see that we donate something, and if they don't use it, we don't cut the check till it's time. We're gonna decide on that right now. I'm thinking I'm gonna do a proclamation later and ask the citizens, just so you know, I'll be reading a proclamation tonight around Coral Leonis. Yes, and that all citizens should step up in support, so.
Thank you.
So I think we need to put our mind where our mouth is if I'm reading a proclamation.
Well, I'm saying we donate, I just don't, so, see what they need at the end.
Could the city, at this point, at no cost, put it on our communications network, pass it out every way we can? We have the communications of a number of things, so use that to be the PR, one of the PR.
We'll definitely have Crystal send out a notification of a proclamation.
Sure.
On our website, which we have a lot of views on there.
We have a website that starts tomorrow or the day after with an online donation portal as well.
I would ask that you give that to Crystal as soon as you get that.
I can.
That way she can actually highlight the proclamation.
Okay.
And the website to those people who can donate.
Okay.
Right? Sound good?
Eric, here to be congratulated.
Thank you.
And I know that you have a tremendous amount of respect for your students and from your students.
Thank you.
And from the community as well. And, and now you, you take it from this council, I'm sure. But you're absolutely dead-on about the winning issue. You already have winners behind you. They know that. You are already a winner. And what you take away from that is just some kind of acknowledgement that you are a winner, but you folks already know it in your heart, and we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And it's unbelievable the things that you've achieved in such a short time. Confidence, character, building blocks for, as you move on in life, you'll not only use it in choir, but you'll use it in so many areas of your life. So you should be congratulated, and thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, when you said, when you said it doesn't matter if we win, the destroyer of confusion's face behind you, it was, oh, we're winning.
Absolutely, you're all winners, and it's well-known fact that, that bands and choir students are a great point above everybody else, so.
They are, indeed. We, we work them hard, and here in St. Helens, we're privileged to have one of the top music departments out of any high school in the state of Oregon. Mrs. Freshner and I work very hard with these kids, and we love what we do, and we love being able to do it here in this environment, in this town, so thank you for continuing to support.
There's an observation I've made that I think you should be aware of. You keep talking of how good you are, you believe you were good. Really doesn't matter, the other people who have chosen you have said you're superlative. You're basically almost putting yourself down. You didn't get here because of what you thought, you got here because of what other people thought, and other people who are really good in the business said you're good. Understand that, pat yourselves on the back for that. But the reason because you said you're good, other people said you're good, you just did the work. Remember that.
Yes, sir, thank you, and you're absolutely right. I try and teach humility in all things for my kids, right, but at the same time, there comes a moment where you are able to step out of that and just acknowledge for a second, hey, you know what, that was good, you did something, and this is pretty, this is, this is as my, as you heard from the kids, this is a once-in-a-lifetime event for them, so I'm, I'm very proud of them.
Well, Eric, I know since you showed up here at St. Helens High School, they, you know, made the music classes fun for the children, it's no doubt that you enjoy it. I mean, that's evidently clear when you're up there directing.
Rick? Students, not children, these are students.
You know, I mean, he reached out to the junior high as my daughter was coming up, so.
She's still a student.
She was, she was a child, she's a grown now, but, yeah. That's right. So there's no doubt about that. I think the, the most that we've donated to something like this is a thousand, so I don't want a single, you know, I, I would recommend that we donate. Matt, we have it there, right, our council funds?
I would start with that, yeah. If you need help at the end, come back and see us again.
Thank you, Mr. Locke, I appreciate it.
And we will definitely be, like I said, I'll be reading a proclamation later and get information from you, and we'll put it on our city website.
Thank you all so much, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha, Grace, Andrew, Jacob, and the destroyer of confusion. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Yep. Destroyer of confusion, I like it. Okay, Rachel, is she here yet?
Yes. Thank you.
Legislative session priorities.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Members of the council, I have included in your packets the I have included in your packets the League of Oregon Cities' long list of priorities. These are a continuation of the nineteen priorities. There are a couple of items that have a direct impact on the city that I would like to pull out and call to your attention. I'm recommending support for two. One is related to rural SDC funds. This bill is requesting, wait, pause right here, Kathy, actually, yep. Requesting a million dollars biennium go to housing and community services. Where developers can request the money from the state to pay our SDC charges.
Interesting.
Yes, if they create affordable housing below sixty percent of the median income, and they agree to maintain it for ten years. So, SDC charge is paid, affordable housing created.
Well, it closes the gap, is what I'm wondering, of what they could potentially add up there. That's, I hate to keep talking about this, but affordable housing is a myth. And to get that sixty percent, you'd have to lower those house prices by quite a bit. And, you know what I'm saying, and is that enough? Is that even close to enough? Close that gap?
No. But it is for, it is, it's another avenue for a developer to request those fees, probably rather than coming to you and requesting a discount in those fees.
Because the gap between mediums is way higher than state levels.
Yeah, ours right now, it's right around fifty-three thousand dollars is the area median income for a family of four.
Yes, and what is it, gap is, do you probably know?
I'll find out for you.
Yeah, I know it's quite a bit more.
But this is just a bill to be aware of. I'd recommend support, and if you make a decision to be promoting more affordable housing being built, this could definitely be kind of a marketing bit or another bit of information that we give to developers of affordable housing. So, that is one. The second one that directly impacts the city that I'd recommend a supportive stance is establishing the Willamette Falls locks authority. And the authority is then requesting an appropriation of lottery bond capacity to open the Willamette Falls locks. We live on the river, right? And we rely on the river for recreation, tourism, and regional growth. Also, the commerce and disaster resiliency. Having an open Willamette River and a way to navigate the river through Portland would be in our interest. And we are looking for a renewed relationship with our river right now. Healthy small ports, additional industry here. By having healthy functioning locks, goods and materials can travel through Portland. There are five other cities supporting this bill and the initiative, as well as Metro, Travel Oregon, a number of other entities that have come together in coalition, many pledging funds year over year for the maintenance of the locks. So, that one is out there, we'll see how it fares.
Do they have any numbers on what that, to our economy, the impact of that? Or is there...
I mean, certainly look around, get back to, to having the locks open, the impact on our St. Helens economy.
Or even statewide?
Yes, there's a lot of information, and I can forward you the packet.
Is there pushback from, from industry at all?
I'm not aware of any opposition.
Just so you know, we...
Willamette Falls and Oregon City you're talking about?
Yeah.
They just opened a new mill there.
The Blue Heron?
Yeah, Blue Heron went to a paper mill that does not make paper from pulp, but makes it from wheat. There's double of wheat that's out in the Willamette Valley. They found a way to make paper with that, and they've opened that Westland Paper Mill again. Not the Blue Heron that was on the Oregon City side, but the mill over on the other side. I'm just wondering if that would be any pushback from those people who are utilizing some of that water for their production. I have no idea. Under what category was this in? Was this in transportation, was this in waterworks, or what was it in?
It's been referred to transportation.
It's under transportation?
Correct, and I think it's the, sorry, I just pulled a little more background. The Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde are, I believe, operating that mill.
All I see in your, in your notes here is speed, safety, under transportation. Bring back House Bill twenty-seven oh-two from eighteen nineteen, which authorizes ODOT to delegate the authority of city-county established designated speed on all the Amity Highway. Where is, where is the, if this is under transportation, where would I find it?
Council President Morton, it's not going to appear in that large League, League of Oregon Cities summary. This is one that's specific to our city. So it's, it's not going to appear in the document that Kathy is showing right now?
Yes.
Yes, it does not appear there. It is very specific to our city, it is not a league priority.
Well, I know, I understand that. It comes from committee. It comes from committees in the Transportation Committee that the league...
Oh, I, I see, yep.
So, and they, and they produce findings and make recommendations, and... And we usually see those recommendations, but I don't see this anywhere.
This is one...
So I'd say this is too soon, right?
This is one we were alerted to outside of league priorities.
Okay, so this isn't, this is not a priority from the Transportation Committee. I only see one priority that's from the Transportation Committee.
Correct, and not from the league.
How, I'm confused. How did you, how did you come up with this opening a lock in Oregon City, and it's going to have an effect on the city of St. Helens? I'd really like to know that.
This is one that we were alerted to by a private partner, talking about the river system as a whole. So this is one we had a personal outreach from folks who have been, who are, hopefully will be part of the commission. So we had a private outreach, and I've been in contact with their lobbyist on the impacts here and also throughout the Lower River.
And what was the private outreach again?
Well, certainly the lobbyist for the Locks Commission by the name of Lisa NATO, and also Wilsonville Concrete Products.
Okay, I just, I, I just, I would encourage the council before we weigh in to make certain that we understand the positive impacts on our community and our city, as well as any negative impacts as well.
Yep, and I'm happy to follow up with the economic impacts to the state and to our region, and I'm happy to get some more background on it.
What I like about it is I can go in my boat right now, and I don't stop it when it falls if that opens up. Right? Is that correct?
A functioning lock, yes.
You can sit there and wait for them to float you up and send you through.
Yes, a functioning lock. We got it possible.
All the way to Salem, Kent?
And Council President Morton, I'm happy to follow up more on this one.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's a wonder. I've sat on a lot of those committees.
Yes, yes, and I misunderstood. It's been referred to the Transportation Committee of the House.
I'm just gonna throw out a personal note on this is, I'm, all four are saving the river. I mean, I'm hundred percent behind it, you know? Canoe, canoe, you know? But, right now, holy crap, our schools and safety organizations could use fourteen million dollars, more than that. Anyway, just a personal note.
I could use fourteen million dollars.
All right, and there are a couple that have come to our attention that...
Sorry.
Nope. So we have a couple where forwarding a recommendation of opposition. One is relating to materials for local water projects. There is a bill out there that preamps local governments from, well, from prohibiting. It's a double provision. Local governments would not be allowed to prohibit ruling out products for water projects. So, it would be out of our purview to restrict or allow kind of writing our own specifications for water piping material. Spoken with Public Works about this. The bill itself is not really all that offensive. The local prohibition is the offensive bit. We would like to maintain control of what materials are used so that they can fit into our existing system, transporting water with our existing pipes. If we need to fix things, we would really like to be able to, to regulate those materials.
What's hidden in that is, it's a good idea to standardize the water systems throughout the state. If you were starting today, unfortunately, there are a number of water systems, and how you repair them would be caught by the standardization, and that's where you really need local smarts or local control on how you fix your own equipment. Because if you're forced into doing something else, that gets very expensive.
Exactly right. This comes from, and this is a state, would be a state-mandated issue. I agree with Topaz on this one a hundred percent. It's, it's up to us to figure out what we can do, and we've done a really good job in doing that thus far. We've, with our, with our Public Works and our, our water issues, our INI, all of that.
And then there is one other that I would recommend opposition, and this is related to the opportunity zones. I am not a revenue and tax attorney, I say that at the outset. This bill, forty-ten, it will disconnect Oregon from the federal opportunity zone tax code. So, in two thousand seventeen, the Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act identified, well, put it to states to identify potential opportunity zones that met certain criteria. Our census tract is an opportunity zone, and it is a, a marketing tool for us.
We have a large opportunity zone.
We have a very large opportunity zone.
Why does the state decide that it wants to cut that out? Because it's like our enterprise zone where we don't get nothing and they won't get nothing? Is that why?
Well, they're looking to disconnect Oregon's tax code from the federal tax code and then run a, run a study of the opportunity zone activities. It, it seems a little premature. I think a study would be great. Let's see if opportunity zones are working and if it's generating the investment and doing the things as intended. It just, it seems premature to disconnect the tax bill.
More on the opportunity zone. The president brought it up last night in his address for a reason. And because they're obviously being utilized throughout the country very well. I want to know some areas where it's being utilized to its fullest.
Any place Trump has built?
That's neither here nor there, is that we are actually in an opportunity zone in the federal government. I think it was bipartisan when this started, or real close to being bipartisan, so...
Right.
And it passed, so...
And as I said, I mean, I, it makes a lot of sense to study the impact. I think the disconnection's premature, and we want our opportunity zone to be just as attractive as one in Alabama.
If you read some financial lingo in there that you need help with, have Matt help you look at it. No, seriously.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to understand this opportunity zone better.
Okay.
I really do.
We'll follow up. And then there's another that we are watching, and this is around, this was a potential threat to enterprise zones. The threat has been muted, thanks to the work of the league. This, in the last session, there was, there was noise to consider tax incentives like enterprise zones to be a public investment, and that would have impacts on development over the course of a work group, and thanks to the hard-working folks at the league, they were able to remove that language and to make it more of a study bill, also directing boldly to, what is the actual language? To modernize and streamline administration of prevailing wage. So this is one just to keep an eye on, pretty much based on the relating to clause. But it is, it is no threat to us, I just want it on your radar.
So would this help us right now?
Neutral, I suppose it's a neutral impact. Extra, extra, around, an extra evaluation of that, you know, modernizing and streamlining prevailing wage application. Wouldn't hurt anybody. Really kind of neutral impact. I'm happy to take any questions now, or happy to follow up on these, these couple of points that I have.
So where do we go from here? In the past, the council has got together and voted on these issues and prioritized them in a way that it came from council. And so, from what I'm getting is, is that you're making recommendations to the council?
I am.
And with your recommendations, I hope that we don't leave out anything that, that we're bypassing, that we have an open, an open avenue to all the issues that came out of committees. And I, I think those, I think I did work.
Well, I, I did, I wanted to present these, and I would like, I guess, either you two accept the staff recommendation or make any changes.
You mean, accept the staff recommendation to move it forward to the, to the league?
No, just to either support or make any, well...
I believe that, I think my question is straight to the point. I think that the council needs to make those decisions. I think that it's staff recommendations at this point, and I think that we can have deliberations on it through the council, possibly in our next, in our next work session. Is there a time for that? Is it time-sensitive?
It is time-sensitive with a thirty-five-day session.
Well, time-sensitive, who would the time sensitivity be? What's your, what's the calendar? Do we have time to deliberate on this? Look at it, study it, and deliberate on it?
When it started, right?
Well, the session, the session has begun, and I, and I'd like to follow up with you a little bit more about the, the process during the long session to by LOC, because for a short session, those committees aren't forwarding a full slate.
I just hope you understand that all of a sudden it comes to me that this is staff recommendations, and here's, here it is. I, and I need some time to study all the things that the, what committees have presented. That's hard work in those committees. Those guys have ironed out, in each committee, six to ten issues, which are very important to that committee, and it's studied and studied and studied again. Now, it comes, now I'd like to see those. And I started looking at it in transportation, I saw only the one thing, and then you brought something else from another point. I'm just confused, and I don't like to be confused. I really like to know what's going on, so I do think that the council needs, pardon me, I'm a little excited. I think the council needs a, a bit of deliberation to make effective decisions on what we feel the League of Oregon Cities should lobby for in our legislature. And that's the key, that they, that they will lobby for the issues that come in and are important from our city and other cities throughout the state. So I just want to make certain that we're making the appropriate decisions. And I'm not quite certain about the, the waterways in the, on, in Oregon City. I, that just, that kind of is applying to me.
I'd just like to speak, these aren't something new that Rachel brought to the table. This is something legislation has been working on, and if we are really in, concerned, we should be inquiring about this and looking at it, and have done our homework, because legislation is happening. And being in an opportunity zone, I am opposed to trying to deregulate the opportunity zone at the state level.
Oh, totally.
So I, she's, what she's asking is not, she's just making you aware of what is going on with the legislation, Council Morton.
I understand that, I understand that.
So if you, or I, or Council Topaz, or Council Locke, or Council Carlson chooses not to study and research those, and Rachel is always at any one of us, that's what she's paying for, is to help us if we are confused.
Okay, in the past, those things have come forward to us in a timely manner, and now it's coming forward to us right now, and I'm just kind of going, whoa, okay.
Yeah, John.
I had just a second opportunity to try to reframe this a little bit, and so... See, especially during a legislative session, so it's always at the level of hysteria and hype, and there's bills coming and changing and all these different things. The work that we do with the League of Oregon Cities and identifying their priorities, and we're part of that tract... The work that we do with the League of Oregon Cities and identifying their priorities and we're part of that tract. When they call up for a letter of support or opposition on something, it's like, what is the city's position? It's kind of the question, right? So is it my decision or is it, we've already pre-done the League's priorities? Sometimes it sees like one-off things with the locks and other, other things that we have to look down. So that comes to me and I'm thinking, okay, is, you know, this is critical path, they, they need it by tomorrow, or is there a hearing? We have to put that on this thing or whatever. There's usually a sense of urgency about it, so I go down to the city's goals, look at our goals, our work plan, is there things in here that support that? And if we didn't, sometimes it's a little uncomfortable, but I'm sure that in all cases, we'd be, we'd read the council majority there. But so it's kind of that in-between space, and it's when sessions end, you know, these bills are coming, they're changing, they're going back. There's different versions being supported, and other cities are asking for support, and some of them are for collective interest of all cities, some of them are collective issue, on issues like the enterprise zone and BOLI and those types of things. It's not, it's not clear. It's a fluid, and we try to do that.
Well, that's my, my whole thing was the opportunities. I'm not opposed to taking more time, but I, I'm not gonna, I want to make sure that I have at least a say on the opportunity zone, which we are part of, which the state's really thinking about. I'm opposing them trying to get out of the opportunity zone or break off from the federal government on it. I totally disagree with that.
I understand.
It affects our citizens and our waterfront and our mail property, our whole area.
And you know me, I'm a matter of process that.
I do.
That the council should weigh in on these things, and we do need that time for the council to weigh in and deliberate on what we have. And I do understand that some things have to come in and, and be reactive. But we really haven't had the opportunity to talk about these things in deliberation thus far. We did, have had the opportunity to look at it. And I appreciate that. To deliberate as a council, I, in the past, we've taken those things and put priorities. So John would know what our priorities are.
And so again, I'm going to come back to, I'm not going to sit here and deliberate over state issues if I want to inquire as a, as a, as my citizens ask me to be mayor or counselor, counselor or council president, that it's my job to look above and beyond that. I'm, we're running meetings, we're about city business and how it affects city business, and I don't want to go over state legislation. I can read that at home on my computer. I do not want to have to sit here and deliberate on that when I have been empowered by citizens to have a vote right here on this. And my vote right now, I know my citizens want to keep the opportunity zone intact for all costs. I feel, I represent them, and you might represent the ones that voted for you, and we all represent the city. And it's not, and like John said, sometimes it's like, hey, I'm looking at this and looking at those council goals, looking at council mission, the mission statement. I'm thinking, how is this aligned with what we got? And just trying to make the best decision of sometimes, from your hip. Sometimes it is.
I want to make an observation about the two different views, one of the locks and one of the opportunity zone. The opportunity zone is definitely St. Helens right here now on our ground. The locks open up a few hundred miles of commerce, heartland of, or the valley of Oregon to the river. And some of that's going to go by us, but that's going to be in a few years. We have a tugboat company here in St. Helens. They're gonna really appreciate having a few hundred more miles of operation area. But that's not right now, so we've got instant stuff and stuff coming down. Now, the locks have another look at it. We are with a number of other people. Our zone is only us. So, I mean, we kind of have to get our head in two different puddles, if you will. Now, the worst thing to do is make no decision. One of it is helping a good part of the state, the river, whether you like it or not, some will and some won't, and the other is St. Helens here. And unfortunately, we don't have time. We got thirty, was it thirty-five days? I can't say, I expect a whole lot of wisdom in thirty-five days, so I'll take my best shot at it. Oh.
So can you just recap the recommendations on, on where we stand on the issues at hand? Just a real quick recap, not a, a whole explanation.
And I think here, and, and hearing this, we can certainly take these, bill by bill, if you would like to take a position or not take a position, and we can have more conversation.
But what you, what you have there in front of you, just recap of where the staff recommends, and just a real.
I have recommendations of supporting the rural SDC at seven hundred and fifty per bionium. Recommendation of establishing the Willamette Falls Locks Authority and giving them funding capacity. Opposing the local government preemption around water piping materials. Opposing disconnecting the opportunity zone from federal tax code. Those are the recommendations.
Okay, so does anybody have any issues with the recommendations that staff has given us?
I don't see a big benefit to the locks opening, to what, how that benefits the city of St. Helens at all.
Okay, I like, I like that. So how do you weigh in on it?
It's, it's going to open up a huge piece of river. We're part of the river. If tugboat companies are going to use that, we have a possibility of putting tugboat companies here. So I'm for it. It also will help the fishermen and the tourists.
Okay, have a look. I want to know how you feel about it.
I, I, I think I'm, I'm great with staff recommendations. John's went through it, he's went through our priorities.
Well, this is the one that was opposed.
All right, I realize.
Call him for a vote on this one so we can make a motion on the whole.
Well, I already said what my piece about the locks earlier.
Okay.
I think the money could be spent better.
But I'm asking.
I'm not against the locks.
Yes, okay, all right. All right, Councilor Locke. If not against the locks.
All in the family.
All right, so you're making a motion?
I make a motion that we approve staff recommendations. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Rachel.
Yes.
Yes, keep up the good work, too.
I will make efforts to follow up with each of you and share those with the entire council.
Yep, and then, you know, we're also going to be having our collaborative meeting coming up on, on two twelve at the Merryweather Place, but.
Correct, I'll be back after the panel.
Okay, so we are discussing, in a discussion regarding First Street, St. Helens intersection improvement, too.
Yeah, so we have today some of our key team members with Pittelson and Associates and Greenworks. And they have a little PowerPoint here where we're going to go through where we're at at this time and show you some of the options and work towards our next steps.
Thank you for having us. My name is Caleb Cox of the transportation engineering firm called Pittelson and Associates. I'm here with Andrew Holder, landscape architect with Greenworks, and also Tony Roos, who's a senior principal engineer at Pittelson and Associates. So. So I think most of you will probably, probably remember, we were here about a year ago, giving a quick overview on a traffic study that we did here at this intersection of First, First Street and St. Helens. And since then, we've been coordinating with Sue and, and we've gotten underway on how some design work. But we wanted to, real quickly, before we present the design work that we've done so far, we wanted to give a quick overview of some of the background and findings that resulted from that traffic study that we did last year. So in looking at this intersection, we found that there were relatively low traffic volumes. It's, it's kind of the downtown core of the city, and you've got pedestrian activity and then the Halloween Town event every September where this is kind of at the center of that.
Who's in October?
Sorry, October, right. The other thing we looked at in analyzing this traffic value, traffic volumes was all-way stop control warrants to see if there was a, a good reason to change the traffic control here at this intersection from three-way stop control to four-way stop control. We found that those warrants were not meant, were not met, but through the study, we noted concerns at this intersection for pedestrian safety and vehicle sight distance, and those were some things that we wanted to address as part of the study. So moving forward, whoops, moving forward into the design phase of this project, these are some of the goals that we have. First being, we want to enhance pedestrian safety in the intersection. I think last time when we were here, several of you noted, and I know Sue has noted this as well, that there have been a number of close calls here at this intersection with pedestrians. You can see it's a really wide road. And the result of that is that pedestrians end up waiting pretty far outside. The result of that wide road is that pedestrians. Pedestrians are waiting outside of the kind of easy viewing angle for, for vehicles, so vehicles are coming up to the stop bar. And the pedestrians are so far out of their referral view that it's just, it's just not a very visible spot for them to be. Another goal with this project is we want to plan for future bicycle facilities throughout the city. So some of the city's planning documents have plans for bicycle lanes on different roads throughout the city. And St. Helens Street is one of those. Another goal is we want to make sure that whatever we do, we're maintaining easy access and parking for nearby businesses and that we're not impacting their facilities in a negative way. And we also want to improve vehicle sight distance at the intersection, going back to the safety piece. And then lastly, a goal with this intersection is we want to make sure that we're creating a design that can be the model for full implementation of the riverfront connector. So there may be, after this one is done, there may be other locations in the city where we want to implement, or the city wants to implement similar, similar intersections. So we want to make sure that this intersection is well vetted and done in a way that's the support of us. So we'll get into some more, some nicer looking concepts here in a minute, but I wanted to show you just the footprint that we're looking at. This is very similar to what you saw last spring, but I wanted to go over just how we're addressing some of those goals that we have as part of this project. You can see with these curb extensions that we're proposing to install at each corner, we're, we're shortening the crossing distance for pedestrians significantly. And by putting pedestrians out there in the curb extension, they're much more visible to drivers as they're navigating the intersection. And the other added benefit of curb extensions is that, that they're actually narrowing up the road. So by doing that, vehicles see that coming and they see, I'm, they know it's a signal to them that they're entering a downtown environment where they need to slow down. And there are constraints on both sides of the road that force them to do so. You can also see we're proposing up on the, in the northwest corner there, there's a driveway pretty close to, pretty close to the intersection. So we're proposing that the curb extension be pushed back and the driveway be integrated as part of that so that that business doesn't lose their access. And then in a similar fashion in the southwest corner, we're looking at leaving that area striped out that you see there for, I think, the restaurant Wild Grant.
Peter.
Peter, that have deliveries coming in there fairly regularly. There's a couple of spots you'll notice where we're eliminating parking stalls, one in the northwest corner and one in the southwest corner. But one thing to note is, if you look at the southeast corner, we're actually adding, able to add several parking stalls. So right now, under today's condition, there's four parallel parking spots. With this new configuration, we can add, I believe it's seven diagonal parking spots. So we're actually adding, adding parking here in the downtown area. The other thing we looked at was sight distance at the intersect, intersection. So these exhibits are meant to illustrate what that sight distance would be. The first, the first one on the top, we're looking at westbound traveling vehicles. Bottom, we're looking at eastbound traveling, eastbound vehicles. So this distance is just the, the distance that a vehicle needs to see in order to be able to safely pull out into the intersection and make either a left or a right turn without interrupting the flow of traffic coming from across the street. So we just wanted to make, make sure that we note that that's something we're looking at designing for as well. Now I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to Andrew. He's been doing a lot of the aesthetic and landscape design for the project. He's going to talk through that a little bit.
Thank you. Right, so on the, on the pedestrian side of the curb, the, the broad goal is to, is to make an inviting space both for residents and for visitors, and to do it in a way that works with the historic character of, of St. Helens. This intersection, this, this particular intersection where it's situated is a threshold to downtown. So it makes a lot of sense to start with this intersection for this type of improvements. And then this conserves a template as the First Street and maybe other streets become redeveloped in the future. This street, this intersection, I think, is a special one because of its position right there at the head of this downtown strip. And so what we're looking at doesn't need to be replicated on every single intersection. I think the same idea, the same type of materials, but not every feature necessarily. This can be like the one, the special one. So it's too bad the. Pointer doesn't work, but. Yeah, you know, I'm just going to point. So the most prominent features, and we have some images to, to look at as well in the next couple of slides, but I'm not playing here. The most prominent features are these new planter areas, and they would have stone seat walls. And I, driving into town just now, I saw the new wayfinding signage. It looks really great, by the way. I love the colors. And I, I really like the stone bases that some of the signs have. And this stonework, you know, there's a lot of different ways to do it, but a good place to start would be same type of stonework, which I believe matches the, the courthouse over here, right? Right, exactly, and that particular type of joint, the way the grout is done in the joints. So there's a lot of historical reference to be made there. I like the idea of using similar materials. And so it's both containing the, the planting and also providing seating for, you know, day-to-day use, but also for parades or Halloween Town, whatever events may be going on. There's, each of the four corners arranged in a symmetrical pattern are pedestrian scale streetlights. These would be positioned on top of one of the pilasters of the stone bench. And they would, I believe the city does not have a, a standard for lights like this yet, but they would be using the same type of pole that you're already using for the wayfinding signage.
That was part of the goal of, in, one of the goals in the wayfinding signage master plan was to select a pole that could be utilized for multiple purposes so that everything would be consistent throughout the city as we started to exchange those out. So thank you.
And then, and then the wayfinding signage, there's, the last planning project identified three signs for, so in this image, north is left. So the southeast, the northeast, and the northwest corners would each have one of those wayfinding poles with the, the small rectangular signs. And then other features include a couple of benches, hopefully situated to take advantage of the views out to the river. And a drinking fountain, bike racks in two locations to support the, the new bike infrastructure.
And is that another bench on the north?
Yes.
Yes, and then over here, so you'll have two, you'll have the planter box on the opposite kitty corner. You'll have a planter box plus a bench on the other side of the, going down, that's what it looks like, there's a bench here.
The, these two are the benches, the southeast and.
And the planter boxes themselves are.
Right. Right. They're, they're less formal seating, but the, the middle part of the bench would be at about eighteen, twenty inches seat height. And it, and it would be a, a smooth precast concrete cap, probably, not, not, not a rough stone top.
Irrigation required or to?
It would, yeah, irrigation would, would be required. There would be, we would need to have sleeves to connect these. Yeah, it's a little more complicated in a situation like this, and I know excavation is, is an issue with the asphalt bedrock. is, is an issue with the basalt bedrock. And so, well, we, we've definitely made the decision to not implant, try to plant trees. The large tree pits needed, I think, would be impractical, and just draining them would be an issue. Part of the, the, the idea with these planters, and there's a good image of this along the slides, is there's this border of sort of a basalt curb, that might be six or eight inches tall, to add some depth to, to the planters. And since it's just shrub planting, it wouldn't be, need to be nearly as deep as my retreats.
So my question was more specific than that. It was, would you have irrigation as a schematic detailed in there so the public works doesn't have to go around and water these things?
Oh, yes.
Or will there be irrigation tubes to irrigate automatically?
Yes, what we propose is an automatic irrigation system.
Great, thank you.
Let's see, there's a few more features. Up here on South First Street, there would be two poles that a banner could be raised, change seasonally or by the, the current event. And lastly, two locations potentially for public art, some open spots that could be used, and the art doesn't have to go in now, you could provide a vacant section of concrete reinforced underneath the sidewalk that whatever art happens could be bolted to in the future.
I think that'd be smart, just to go ahead and taken that up.
Right.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and just, we would just need to have it recorded somewhere, very specifically where that is, so you know where to bolt. Let's, can you go to the next slide, please? There are a few images to illustrate what we're talking about here. Never left, left is, is not the same type of stone, but it's a, a good example of the seat wall with the precast concrete cap and a taller pilaster. That one is in Oregon City. The big one in the upper right is City of Sisters, and that's a Greenworks project from a few years ago. I think it was really successful, similar stone walls, they had very nice custom lighting, which is actually on top of similar seat walls there, and an example of, more of a high desert example, but example of the planting you might see in the curb, in the zone. And then, lower left is Tulleride, Colorado, example of a, of a banner across the street. Again, Oregon City, lower middle with a seating area and some public art. And then lower right is also Oregon City, and that's the example with the, of the walls plus that basalt curb that we could add some depth to the planting. One more, please. And then, two examples of the public art. I wish I could remember the name of the object on the lower right, it's a logging implement, I think they're only about six or eight inches long, and it's spikes driven into the logs to pass a rope through.
Dragged down the river.
Exactly, so...
Boom Pike is what I think we used to call them.
Boom Pike?
Yeah, because you put it in a boom log which held all the logs together.
Okay.
Yep.
So, yeah, public, there's lots of potential for public art, and it should definitely be locally representative. And then, from, this isn't actually from the wayfinding master plan, it's from a, a later submitted, but just, we all know what the waystanding, wayfinding looks like. And then, an example of what the lighting could like, look like, I'd heard acorn, sort of traditional light fixtures, and a quick mock-up of how that would look on top of a similar wall.
Yeah, just to note that on the boom tie, I think it, I think something like that really creates a, a, a good incentive to build on, as a maritime type of theme that is so pertinent about the culture of this town. If you were here two decades ago, or three decades ago, you would see nothing but log rafts everywhere. And now it could be anything from the boom ties to anchors to any kind of other things.
A big giant fish hook.
That's it. There you go. All right. With the mayor on the other end of the line. Exactly. So you see this predominantly in the islands, in, in the Gulf Islands, in the Canadian Gulf Islands, and up north quite a bit with the cities that are located in cities. Very nice. Good touch.
So that's what I had for the presentation.
Yeah, and then, looking out into the next several months, this is the...
Can I go back to the green space?
Sure.
Have you looked at the portable planters that they have in Astoria? Basically, big wooden baskets, if you would, where they, they, a lot of them, Judy Thompson's got one in my yard, I know it, is basically wildflowers and they're self-ordered. Basically what they are is a wooden frame with some heavy steel fencing in it, and you just throw green stuff in it, you know, wild stuff, so you can see it from the side. But if you need to, you can pick them up and get them out of the way.
That could be a good option, we'll have to, we'll have to look.
Compared to a fixed planter.
In general, you know, our, our approach is to try and do more permanent type of infrastructure, even for planting, but, you know, it all depends on the, on the needs.
It was just a question, so, and obviously you need something of fairly sturdiness, even portable.
I need, I need a question about the intersection, if you're going to entertain that later on, or now, or when?
We'll, we'll definitely have time for questions at the end.
Got it.
Pretty much there, just wanted to maybe real quick go over the, the schedule over the next several months. The goal of our, our meeting today is to get your feedback, and then within the next couple of weeks, from the footprint of the concept design, confirm the different landscape features that we're proposing. There may, there may be some thinking and choosing, maybe we do this, but not this. And then once that's nailed down, hopefully in March, we can begin what we call our, our ninety percent design, which is getting the design most, most of the way there, and then we bring it back to the city for, for some review and comments, and then hopefully we finalize things in June and are ready to advertise the project to contractors to bid on. And then we're looking at constructing in July through October, and then the goal would be to have construction done before the end of November. Before Halloween Town is the biggest thing.
Yeah, you're not gonna be done, you said, though. It'll be July through October.
I, I misspoke. The goal would be to be done end of October, or, sorry, Halloween Town is October, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, so the weekend before, the weekend before, just so you know.
So we'd have to get everything wrapped up before then, or have the contractor get to a stopping point and pause if that...
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Maybe working around it for sure.
Something that has to happen.
So with that, we wanted to wrap things up, and solicit any, any questions from you all.
I got some questions and possibly comments if you can go back to the intersection. One of the things that I don't think you took into consideration is the trailer traffic that's, that's downtown. And one of our big tourist draws is fishing out in the river. One of the only areas that we have is a boat ramp, it has, you have to go through that intersection. You have to, to launch your boat, you've got to go through that intersection. To pull your boat out, you've got to go through that intersection. It's a lot, some of those are very long trailers. So consequently, I, I don't understand why that wasn't taken in consideration, the trailer traffic, as well as other events that we have, like Thirteen Nights on the River on Thursday nights, our, our Christmas tree, or, I mean, our, our Lights Festival, other festivals that we have in place where that, that intersection gets very crowded. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's wise to not have a four-way stop. I think that a four-way stop would aid in, one, pedestrian safety, and I think it would, I think it would aid in a, from creating traffic jams, especially of boat, trailer traffic. And there's a lot of it in terms of launching and getting back out. So St. Helens Street continues and, and, and goes down into Riverfront Street, down by the Marina. It makes total sense for me to, that, that we should have a stop sign for those boats to be, or that traffic to be allowed to make turns coming out, and turns going in. It's, you haven't, maybe you haven't seen that, but it gets to be, it gets to be kind of crazy during fishing season. And that's, that's my, that's my big comment about the, the, the four-way stop. I would, I would, I think we saw a significant safety issue happen with the four-way stop that we had over on Sixth Street, when there was a three-way stop and it finally went to a four-way stop, that it wouldn't be accepted by the community. Overwhelmingly, it got accepted by the community. And it would be a, kind of a, a, kind of a long curve for people to get accustomed to a four-way stop? Uh-uh. Everyone got involved in it, and I heard more positive comments about the four-way stop than anything when that went in. So, I don't, I, I really disagree with this being a two-way stop. I think a four-way stop is, is essential for the safety of this community and for the efficiency of transportation to move through that transportation corridor. I have one other comment, but it doesn't have anything to do with the intersection. It has to do with safety. There's been a lot of close calls and non-reported fender benders on First Street, and that's because cars that are, that are parking, as you see the, the one automobile over here in the bottom right, that they pull in, if they pull in next to the mayor's pickup, or a bigger van or whatever, how do they see to get out? No backup camera will allow you to see oncoming traffic to get out. If you simply, like Durango, Colorado, simply took their, their parking and moved it, so because they have backup cameras, and because you go by the parking area, you can look at it, see that it's empty, get a good look at it, stop your car, put it in reverse, and back into it. That way, when you leave, you've got a clear vision of cars that are coming twenty to twenty-five miles an hour, and you can pull out. Otherwise, as you are in the driver's seat, you can't see a thing, and you're only guessing that cars won't be coming. You have to inch out, and inch out, and inch out, till you finally get vision. Not a good plan the way this is. It's totally ineffective and dangerous. So I would suggest, in the future, that we kind of take a good look at that, switching that kind of parking, so it makes more sense for safety. Backup cameras, I would say in five years will be on every car that comes out of the, out of Detroit, or out of Japan, or wherever they come from. Anyway, my, my, my two cents.
It's interesting you brought up the, the parking there, because I think the back-end parking on-street is something that I heard about recently getting implemented, I think in Oakland.
There's some in Portland, too, now.
Is there some in Portland, too? And I know, at the time, there were worries of people, you know, coming from the other side of the road and parking in, head-in parking, not realizing that it's supposed to be back-in parking. But I haven't, I haven't heard how that has been working out, or how it's been implemented, so it could be worth exploring.
Just an option.
More studies being conducted on that, because it is a new, a new methodology that's being employed because of that very reason.
I'm going to enforce and argue stronger than Council Morton did. Let's go back to the four stop signs. When you're taking your boat trailer down to the launch ramp, you're going downhill east and you're making a hard left, which says you're making a hard right coming up, and you're not stopping downhill, you get up there. Right now, most of the boat traffic comes down St. Helens Street, Old Portland Road to St. Helens Street and straight across. But you've got that hard left, it's a, it's a funny, we'll say, pre-traffic condition when you get to this. When you're coming up that hill and you're gonna make a hard right to go out Columbia Boulevard, not as much traffic, but that's a pain. Now, what is not shown here is we've got a connector plan which basically starts here or goes down First Street and goes out. And sooner or later, a lot of the boat traffic or trailer traffic's gonna be coming in our connector plan rather than down Old Portland Road and St. Helens Street, and you're gonna have to make a right turn, then a left turn with big trailers at this corner. Was anything thought about, you know, long-term, you know, the next five-year plans that were coming in?
Did you bring the truck trunks over to the...
I don't have them with me, but we actually presented them when we were here last spring doing the concept design work. We, we tested pretty large fire trucks at this intersection as the design vehicle.
Oh, you know, fire trucks are one thing, idiots driving boat trailers are another thing. Now, the other thing that he pointed out was the backup parking. I bicycle, and it's nice coasting down First Street, and the number of people backing out who don't see a bicycle coming is incredible. And, again, with the large SUVs and pickup trucks, you cannot see anybody coming down the street. I really like the driver to see who's coming down that street when they pull out. But I know even bicycles is dangerous because they can't see you.
I know it's outside the scope of the project to convert all of downtown to back-in parking. We could, we talked to Sue about this, is instead of the, at the intersection where we're tying in the ends, if Sue wants to, or wants to direct us to, we could spin that curb instead of being angled for nose-in parking today. It would cost you a couple stalls until you convert the rest of downtown, but at least then the curbs are set up.
Well, if we replicate what we do today in a better way, it's one, if we think about what we need for the future, that's, I mean, it's, it's two mental processes, just kind of do good with what we're doing now, and make it better for what the future, so that's where the things come in. This, no problem, but we don't even connect, consider the connector plan. You consider the connector plan, then you've got some iffy here. If we have a lot more people going to the boat ramp, and we've got Sand Island and other people going down, making that short business before you make a right or left turn to get from River Road to this corner, is a little more difficult than just watching people walk and a few cars go.
So Paz is absolutely right, because Gray Cliffs Waterfront Park will be expanding into kayak launching. There's gonna be a lot of traffic going down that, down First Street, and through there. That's, that's, to me, merits a, a, a good study or further kind of anticipation about traffic problems and, and those kinds of things with, with those trailers. And I, but it could be very easily overlooked by you folks when you did your traffic study about how much trailer traffic there is.
Hiddleston did the Riverfront Connector Plan, so our coworkers that we sit next to were helping develop that water, the Riverfront Connector Plan. So we did incorporate that data into our study of the intersection. I, I personally, I drive a thirty-five-hundred Dodge truck and pull a boat trailer, so I understand the swing distance necessary for a curb turn such as this and a build-out like this.
Well, in so much the turns, it's a matter of a four-way stop, so people, so you can get your car through there.
We don't design intersections...
And you're sitting there for ten minutes, and people behind you are honking horns.
Of course, the, the study we've done, taking account of the future traffic, the twenty-year build-out, the warrants aren't there for a four-way stop. There's a, it's a nationally federally recognized methodology by which four-way stops are considered. Your other section, it may have met those triggers, I don't know that, and I don't know that intersection. But this, when we ran through the warrants, doesn't mean, and we looked at it for traffic volumes, we looked at it for pedestrian volumes. We don't design intersections for one event a year, or one or two events a year.
Exactly.
We design it for the long term.
I'm the one that actually brought this whole thing up. I live just down the street. Been here for twenty years, walk it all the time. Sometimes my cars don't leave for weeks, because all I do is walk downtown. Been doing that for twenty years. Been watching that for twenty years. That's why I mentioned it, and I brought it up. I, I can't... I, I can't believe these guys, they've been listening to me, holy crap, I don't say anything. They brought up all the, all, but, well, there are other issues besides those things that they brought up and whatnot. But when you did, came back and did your study for the intersection, maybe you should've looked around at some of the people that live here and find out about it when you're doing your studies.
What do we?
Every intersection in every city is different.
Well, and they did, they, they did, it's funny, I mean, we've, I've sat in with Senator Johnson, the, um, oh, gosh dang it, I'm escaping their names right now, the farmer's out there, uh, Mark, Larsson's, yeah, um, ODOT wanting to stoplight at Bennett Road as well as Mallard Road. And it does not warrant, uh, what they say is true, that it's a state mandate type issue. We could probably, we can go ahead and put a couple pole, put a couple spots for poles there. Okay? Figure that in.
Absolutely.
Figure two spots for two poles.
Plan, we can plan for the future.
Flags in it or whatever in the meantime, till a stop sign goes in, put it there. Where a stop sign will go, okay? That way, we have it there. Cause I hear you guys, and I'm tired of hearing you guys.
It's a mindset, and your mindset is national standards, state standards. Our mindset is local standards. What we feel is important in our local community, our neighborhoods. And that's why, that's why you're talking to the City of St. Helen's Council. So, just know that, and, and I, I understand that.
I personally love what you guys have brought to us, I like it. I do pull a trailer too. Sometimes you have to stop, wait, and some out in the other lane just to get around if you're, if you're paying attention. Some people don't, you're right, counter Topaz, but that's always gonna happen. There are those drivers out there who just are not used to pulling a trailer. So, I really like what you guys brought us. I mean, overall, you know, other than the stop sign issue, I think I hear everybody's pretty happy with the drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, without a doubt.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just be with that back-end parking notion? I know you put some examples of the City of Sisters up there, and I know part of their project, they did, a section of that was on the street behind, not the parallel street, the street behind, so it all back-end parking. The community had a real acceptance issue with that, and it's basically a free-for-all. People crossing the lane, yeah, and it's just.
Really?
Been a real t-t-t steep slope. I mean, if everybody's, the horses are all going the same way and everybody's doing the same thing, it works and, um, but, you know, here where it's acceptable to drive up on the curb, maybe.
That's true.
I would investigate other communities that have those re-
Before.
Facilities before we say, yes, this is a great idea. Cause it's, and it may work in an urban setting.
I think that, uh, that would look really sharp downtown, just looking, especially at that Sisters Corner right there with the little planter box and the step, or the seat behind it. Grasses, little grasses, a few boulders. Um, I like the public art, a couple spots for public art in your, your design. And, uh, the light poles will probably have the ability to have hangers off of them, right?
That's right, we were thinking, uh, probably, yeah, some platters. And, and those can be automatically regaining too.
Yeah, they can, yep, it's a little trip tube coming up.
I think, I think beyond what the mayor's saying, I think this is an outstanding, outstanding intersection for the gateway to our Riverfront District and our historic district, this whole district down here as people move through it. It's a, it's a wonderful gateway, and especially, uh, the use of a banner. We've been talking about that for years of where we could do additional banners other than Columbia Boulevard and Highway, uh, next to Highway Thirty. Very nice.
One thing I recall being in Oregon City with the main street was, there was like a couple squares that had some art, a metal, that were into the concrete that had art on them.
Excuse me, squares?
Like steel squares in the concrete that had art in the, on.
It's all has a rodeo walk of fame, they've got eighteen-inch brass, brass discs cast into the concrete that are all.
So, looking at that, maybe trying to incorporate that, that into landscaping somehow, some way, maybe a couple or one, even just one. I don't know, something to look at though.
There's some local artists who would be willing to, uh, build something.
That, you know, uh, Pacific Stainless has got a CNC machine that they can do a lot of wonderful things with, so, um, yeah, there, there is that. Pretty much, you give them the image, they load it in their machine and it comes out looking like that. It's a little 3D etching type, yeah, pretty amazing what they can do nowadays with. They're just, uh, I like the basics, you know, this, I just thrown that out there, I thought it was kinda cool. We were looking down and it's like, oh, wow.
It also had street names, the street you're on in.
Yes, it did, yep, yes.
We also have Michael Curry as a, uh, as a person who lives in Scappus and that fountain that, as you go by Scappus, was designed and donated by him. And at one time, he was going to do a Lou Whit sculpture for the City of St. Helens, and I think he's still open to doing that. I mean, we have a lot, we have potential for so much artwork, uh, in, in, in our community. And now we, and now this gives us an additional setting. Very impressive. Okay, gentlemen, I think we're, are, I appreciate your time.
We're great.
Yeah.
Um, look forward to seeing the ninety percent. Yep, so we'll see you in just, uh, what, about a month and a half or so?
About March, about March, about a month and a half?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think May for ninety percent.
Remember, you're gonna have that deadline coming up, October.
Yeah.
All right, let's do a planning division report.
Yeah, and I'll, um, I'll be quick. First, I wanted to say today's my first day back, um, from a two-week vacation in Thailand.
Hey!
And I just wanna thank everybody for putting up with that, um, especially Jacob. I know, um, he was seeing a lot of customers while I was gone and, um, I know some other staff kinda picked up where I had left some projects, and so I just really appreciate being able to get out. It was amazing. If you've never been out of the country, it is life-changing and you should definitely do it at least once in your life. I had such a good time. I'm still kind of processing, um, all of the things I saw and, and how it's affecting me. But I think it makes you a more humble person.
Many images, you bring back about a thousand?
Yeah, way too many.
Yeah.
Um, everything is notable, like everything is notable, yeah.
Our beautiful beaches are very warm.
Yeah, I, I didn't make it to the beaches, um, we were more like in the rural parts of northern Thailand. But I experienced some like huge cultural, um, immersion, basically. I was like living with the villagers for about six days. Um, and I just got to see some really cool rotational farming happening with rice paddies and stuff like that. Um, and jungle, like I'd never experienced a jungle before. Um, yeah, it was, it was really cool. Um, so, on that note, uh, I've been adjusting back to being in the office again and, um, getting up to date with all the different projects going on. I just wanna touch on a couple of things that are moving forward. One is a reminder that we're working on the Boise White Paper or the St. Helens Industrial Park, uh, master plan. And we're kicking that project off next Friday. Um, our consultants are coming, they're gonna do a site tour, um, and we're basically gonna give them all the data we have. It's kind of a data dump day. And I wanna just remind everyone that we're gonna incorporate known and anticipated future users. So, like the RV Park Master Plan that we talked about last council, you know, we're giving them that, even though it's conceptual, we just want them to be aware. So, that's on the radar. That, that master planning process, you'll probably hear more as we progress. But it should be done by May twenty-twenty-one is the grant contract. So, we're hoping to have it wrapped up much earlier than that, but, um, yeah, so that's that. Um, let's see, the Fifth Street Trail, so the Columbia River Youth Corps students have been out there removing trash, uh, and, uh, mostly blackberries, but other invasives. Um, we sent notices to the abutting property owners that there would be students in there pulling out invasives. They found some like larger appliances.
Yeah, a bunch of garbage is what I heard.
Yeah.
There was a ton of garbage.
Yeah, I think people just kinda used it as landfill for a long time and just dumped household garbage and appliances and things over the years. So, really good work by the students so far. I just briefly went by, I'm gonna go out for more, like a better site walk tomorrow to see how they're doing.
I've got a pile of garbage that you would never suspect was down there, I mean, a pile.
Yeah, well, like, once you remove the blackberries, you see what's underneath.
For the Fifth Street project?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that's moving forward, um, let's see.
Just FYI, another spot like that is the little canyon just before the middle school there.
Oh.
What row is that, like eleven or Eighth Street or?
Is that Jackass Canyon? Is that right, Tim?
That's right, Tim.
Okay. It's on the maps, is that, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, right where there's, there's that little canyon, and I know there's a lot of stuff in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, we'll just get the students out there for the next trail project. Um, the vehicular signs, the three large ones, we had Ramsey replace the panels so that the mileage font was bigger. It turned out that that was covered under warranty. They used incorrect drawing when they prepared the, the panels. Um, and so the font was smaller than the rest, and I think, I just drove by today, they look much more legible. So, next time you're on Columbia, look at those vehicular signs, the mileage is readable now from, from a car. So, working as intended, hopefully. Um, and that was also all covered under warranty work, um, so they did that work for free. That project through Travel Oregon is wrapped up. I'm gonna be submitting our final report for reimbursement. And Sue's got a reimbursement through her transportation funding option, so that project is pretty much done for now. That was phase one. You'll note on the First Street intersection here, there's a couple of other signs that are gonna get funded through that project, which is awesome, finding these other funding sources, um, other than just Travel Oregon. But if there's interest in doing more signage, um, we can work on another Travel Oregon grant, maybe the next cycle once we close this one out, um, just thought I'd mention that. Um, let's see, the Food Bank Project is moving forward. We're gonna have a bid set for review, um, this month. So, Lower Columbia working, is working on, um, getting that contracted out, so we're gonna see that project soon.
You know much different the area's gonna look once that is done and then the, what they're doing in the little hole there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, it's gonna be like, ooh.
Right across the street, yeah. Um, yeah, I, I also just wanted to note that, um, you're, you have an RFP for Riverfront Development on the agenda. Next week, uh, city staff is gonna review the, a revised site plan that Tokla submitted. Um, and then I think the following week, maybe Tokla's coming to work session, or at least that's the plan. So, I just wanted to point that out, um, that we've been working hard on that revised site plan. And I hope staff review next week is productive and, um, I just wanted to reiterate that. So, any other, any questions? I tried to be quick.
No, that was quick, thank you.
Good.
So, uh, let's just jump ahead onto the discussion of the RFP with Riverfront Development. So, we're basically, staff is in the process of revising that, is that what we got, John?
So, we are evaluating the conceptual proposal for a cost estimate to understand the public, or just, the public piece of that.
Mm-hmm.
Potential public piece of the partnership. And, you know, without going all blown outside effort to do it, we'll just internally kind of work on some numbers. And, um, and see if it, if it meets our standards, that piece of that too. Yeah, that he wants to come, February nineteenth meeting, present. He wants to do his.
Think we wanna move ahead. I know that I've had people approach me, Council Locke has mentioned it. I don't know about Council Topaz, um, the top on the waterfront. Any word out there?
People want something done, but that's, that's as much as I can give you there.
Well, the people I have reached out to me have actually potential people who would like the opportunity to be able to give a proposal of what the city would like, they would like to know what the city would like, or do you want them to draw up something what they see? Or how does that go? I know we had the conceptual drawing and then Tokla drew up their own three buildings, which was different than our conceptual drawing.
Right, it's just that's the fit in the frame somehow.
Yes, so, a lot of, a lot of, actually, a lot of people inquiring about, that's beautiful property right there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with that, big questions or what? Interested big time, questions big time.
Have they seen the RFP we went out for previously for the RFQ?
I don't, I don't know where it's at.
The former RFQ?
It was actually, it was actually put out before I came.
Oh, okay.
And I actually, nobody really responded, and then I ended up scrolling into John's office, February of sixteen. You realize that?
I know, I know the person that's contacting me, he's downloaded all the Riverfront stuff off our website and everything, so he's.
I just.
Yeah, it is, it's, all of that is on our website, but we can pull it off if you wanna see it.
I think it might've been March, April, weren't you there on that when they came in?
Tokla?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I was here.
March or April of sixteen.
We worked with a firm to help us create that RFQ document, and that took time and, I mean, it, it was a pretty lengthy document. And I think just reviewing that, just see how it was structured and what we were looking for at the time might help answer some of your questions. And I would just add that, you know, we were, we were really working hard to get this build grant. And that, that was where we were spending all of our capacity and effort, and we tried again. And at this point now, we're looking for other funding sources, maybe that's not the sole funding source. And so, we went back to Tokla and kinda had a conversation about, well, we need to develop a funding plan for the public piece because this build grant may not be it. And so, they went kind of back to the drawing board on their end to try to make our public investment smaller and more manageable. Um, and so, I don't think this like long period of time was just based on Tokla dragging their feet. I think it was us trying to get our funding sources in a row. And now, I think this revised plan is a more manageable effort from our, from our stand, standpoint. And so, I think we need to give this like revised plan a shot, um, before just going out to public bid.
Uh, and, uh, so, but they did, they were on a timeline. They were on a timeline, yes.
Yes, for.
And we did not, we did not break out of that timeline or any requirements. And if they have spent any money on doing any, part of that timeline was we would reimburse them. I don't think there has been. I suspect there's been very minimal on their part. I mean, just a conceptual drawing, when you have an architect that you're used to working with, you're not charged a bunch of money privately. So, that being said, I've had a lot of people, myself personally, I know Council Locke has for sure, um, that are big players, real estate people to developers that are in the industry like John Jerseys, like Jeff Yarber, Keith knows a few people, that, um, Jeff just seems to stumble across people sometimes and there's a lot of people inquiring on what is going on with the waterfront property. And the way property works is if I can tie it up, I'm gaining money on that property cause they're not building no more riverfront property under Columbia. And nothing's gonna happen but that, that up in value, and the longer I can tie it up, the more it goes up in value.
Tokla recognizes that the NAs expired, and we have participated in some cost sharing on some of the items. Use component and, uh, yeah, I'll, I have to check exactly.
We've gotten one public proposal, or one public from them, and actually one kind of private here from them. Two meetings in the last, and it's almost been three years, and that's just where I'm at with it, you know?
And I do think they were dragging their feet, I really do, I have to disagree. Because in that forum, uh, with the, uh, with this council chambers just packed with people, there was nothing but positive comments from the public. with this council chambers just packed with people, there was nothing but positive comments from the public. And Tokla at that time said, and the question came up was, well, when can we expect this happening? And the response was, we're getting the architect on it right now. And so, that was the response. And so, I don't think the architect has done anything since that, since that. Since that hearing we had. It lets the public down, it lets us down. We're kind of, uh, at, at a loss for, uh, an answer to say, hey, when's it happening? What's going on? So, I don't know. I just think that, I think Tokla is, is pretty much responsible for not coming to us. And, and initiating what they says was a very strong interest in the area. That's, that's my, that's just my opinion, my little, uh, perspective.
I would imagine there's a lot of moving parts, you know?
Right, it's changed ever since, since we went out for the RFP. I mean, everybody was grabbing what they could to get then, you know, I mean. Especially important and just started, so. Everybody's kinda had a feel, more, more time to look around too now, so, anyway.
And I'm not, it's not like I shut the door on them. I think it's just more of we'd be foolish to not. So, what they presented us was three buildings and that concept has changed as of what I have been notified of. Is that, is not the same proposal. That was the original when they showed up here in the public. Um, what they're proposing today is much different than what they were proposing a year ago.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I think the, we should look at the reason for the change though. And it was, you know, per our request to get our public investment in a more manageable chunk. Because we didn't get the build grant. We didn't get the fifteen million that we asked for. Um, and so we were going back to the drawing board to see, well, how can we move this project forward without the build grant? And the best way forward is to limit the amount of public investment we need to make on the site. Um, and also, you know, relook at our urban renewal agency and see about that as a, you know, a viable funding source.
Tell you what, I think there's a lot of opportunity to the city, citizens down here. That, that property is of such a value, I would not put it past a developer to say, I will come and put the roads in. I'll put your boardwalk in. You allow me to build on this property right here and I'll put it all in.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to see that.
Well, I can give them that chunk of property, but they will build the roads and they will build that boardwalk. I almost guarantee it through our engineering codes, because they can build it a lot cheaper than we can. I'm guaranteeing you, we should put it out there and we should foolish not to. I could definitely see a developer saying, if you guys wanna give me this amount of property and you want your park expanded in that boardwalk public. I will put them all in and you give me that property and I'll build on it. And then you collect all the tax in your urban renewal on that. That's a win-win.
Worldwide market as well.
Uh, win-win. And it's an opportunity zone. They can sell it in ten years and whatever profit they, the opportunity zones, and I'm asking Matt and Rachel to check into that. Is this tax-free money. So, what it costs to build is not the value of the building. So, when they sell that building, the way the opportunity zone, the President Trump spoke on it last night. Is that it is tax-free money that they're gonna walk away from in ten years. Pretty good for somebody who's right around fifty-eight, who's got a pile of money, who wants to invest and retire at sixty-eight. They get a, take a tax break and they'll have a ten thirty-one exchange it. Walk away.
Was the zone in place during the marathon? Because there were people during the marathon who said they could do it. Couple of people there who had done some very large work at Salt Lake, said they knew some people could put two hundred million into it. Was the zone in place?
I don't think I know who you're talking about, but, uh.
So, that's shaped.
It's relatively new.
Okay, so it's shaped, okay. So, there isn't.
It's just the federal rep, it's just the federal piece of it, right? The investment, not the state taxes.
Yeah.
So, the, the finances have changed at the big level.
Well, like the hotel, it actually wouldn't meet the medium income. You have to make over fifty thousand for the enterprise zone, because it's enterprise owned as well down there.
If you do put that request out, uh, I think it's important to get that worldwide. I think it's important to do it right. And, and get as much emphasis on it so you, so it, so it is not missed by, uh, big time developers. By people who want to do those kinds of things and somehow miss it. So, that's my only input.
Doug, the one thing on that, we have to realize, the state doesn't help us. We've discussed. The state doesn't really advertise sites to build on in this state very well. We better make sure we have some company that's beyond this state. Because our state government does not help us in advertising.
So, that would be the mil, more towards our industrial property, but, yeah, so I think, uh, you know, it's a huge opportunity. Who wouldn't wanna build down here and have maybe one of those whole buildings? If you're that kind of wealth, like Uncle Phil, if you're out there listening, I'm looking at the camera. We got, we got some riverfront property here.
Ducks United.
You can build on. You can have that whole top floor for your condo, if you've got that. And, uh, you can have your helicopter pad right on top. You can fly in. We still, we got acreage here, so come on down. Hey, that's it. We gotta market it. We gotta market it one, one way or another, you know? And it, it, just sitting here, toeing our thumb saying, ah, Tokla keeps changing. Where are we going? What's happening? Is not the right answer, in my opinion. That's why I brought it up. And we didn't break out of the timeline and the timeline actually broke quite a while ago, so I think we have been very patient with the timeline. In making this request. And now, when, once it caught wind of it, we got a scramble, we got a piece of paper thrown at us that was something totally different. And that's just the way I felt about it. And I've been vocal with you, John, about that. I know you've been in contact with Tokla on it.
Yeah, they've, they've continued to be interested in the project. They just haven't been able to answer their, their issues. So, I guess the question to staff is, do you wanna? Do you wanna hear their proposal on the nineteenth or do you want them to hold that proposal back while we, this effort to open up the cycle for?
Let's wait. Hear it for the nineteenth and see what they have and, and then go from there. Do you, do you agree with that?
I don't.
You wanna do it right now?
I don't, because it wasn't until we actually started talking about this, because we all have been talking about this. That actually, we got pushed forward to where they're wanting to present it and I've been strung along before. And I, I, I'm not saying that's what's happening, but it would be foolish to not put it back out. It's like tying yourself up to a realtor. No, I'm trying to check a property right now. But he's got my property till May. If he does not produce and sell that property, I have the opportunity to disband from him. And go out for a different proposal. Now, if I've done capital improvements since, and like tear down fences, like make it look a lot more preventable, like we got facelift on buildings down here. All this that's happening down here affects that property and it's went up in value. That's where I do disagree.
Well, does that prevent them from coming in and giving their presentation on the nineteenth?
Well, yeah, because I think it's, uh, why, why wouldn't we want to hold another proposal? Do you want, do you guys want a proposal or do you just wanna, you wanna string them along? Do you wanna be fair to them? I guess is what I'm asking. Do we want them to show up? Is that really fair to them?
Show up, we'll have them show up with everyone else then.
Uh, that's what I guess why I'm asking. It wouldn't be fair to them.
So, to be competitive, right?
I think, I think it's fair also for John to speak up about the, um, like, the timeline it's gonna take to prepare an RFQ. For a, the most, arguably the most important project in the city's history. You know, that's gonna take time to work out, like, what we're actually asking for. Um, it's not as simple as using our template.
You have one, right?
Our template. Yeah, we had one from twenty sixteen. I think that's a good start, is to look at what we issued in twenty sixteen. See what we presented at that time. If we wanna tweak that or ask for something different. Um, you know, I think in this case, we're asking for RFQ, like qualifications, not a proposal. We're not asking for specific things back. I think we just wanna get to know a developer and see what projects they've worked on in the past. That's qualifications. We wanna know who they're working with. Um, so, there's conversations that need to happen before we just say, okay, we're, we're going out to bid. Um, we need to kinda structure it. Bookends.
I know, I, I just got to say, I got a lot of citizens asking about that property and we've been working on this for three years. So, we've had, you know, I mean, time and I hope we can just modify this RF, which was an RFQ.
Yes.
To begin with. So, this RFQ that we can actually just modify it a little bit internally should be okay. I mean, you guys are engineers and, uh, planners.
Why can't we ask for an RFP?
Well, at the time, I mean, John, you can speak up.
We can, yeah.
But we were using a consultant to help us prepare it and they were in support of doing an RFQ. Because they thought developing a relationship with a developer, it was a better way to have a relationship with the developer. Before asking them to put a lot of effort into planning a proposal. Um, they thought we would get more responses back if it was qualifications than.
It could be RFP.
And that's kind of the whole caveat here is we only got one, so we haven't had a chance to go out and see what's out there.
Yeah.
And that's really what we need, because you're right, this is our most important thing.
And I don't.
We gotta make sure it's the right thing.
Right. And, and, you know, rushing through the creation of a RFP or RFQ. You know, you're gonna get the same type of rushed responses back, if you need to be deliberate about it. That's all I'm advocating for.
Possibly. I mean, there are, except there's big firms out there though that they, they could have some drawn out here by five o'clock tonight. And have a great proposal then, you know?
The, the people who do big RFPs, they're hoping to get business. They know it's costing them. Fine, it's, it's a gamble that someone's gonna listen to them, but that's what they do.
Right.
And the other thing that we have to remember is, look what happened across the river when Vancouver put a little piece of junk over the top of the river. Look what it's done to that piece of waterfront. We have very recent history about what you're doing with waterfront, what it's done to it now, which we didn't have before. So, the game is rather different than it was the first time around.
Junk, you talking?
They got this little thing you can walk out over the river, you know, it's a few billion dollars when the hotels are junk around. But think, think of what it looked like before they put that there. It was a waterfront run down.
Yep. Now, it looks good.
And if you told the people then, look what we're gonna do here, they looked at you and kinda like, right, you're gonna do that out there with that? And, and look what it happened now. I mean, it's.
I agree with you, but I don't agree with the piece of junk.
It, it's, it's Washington. What'd you expect?
Okay.
It was an old mill site at one time too, Doug.
Yeah. Alright, so, we are looking for a RFP, RFQ, um. I wouldn't mind seeing a copy of it. I've never seen that. I know that. Councilor Topaz hasn't seen it either.
Shared.
I know these two. You didn't see it? You guys put it out. You had to have seen it.
It's been a while, so.
I probably did, but.
Alright, so, uh, we're gonna discuss Citizens Day. That was, the discussion was for, um, last year we did it the week after the Kiwanis. And I was just gonna discuss with you guys, because you're both Kiwanisians. Um, has there, somebody expressed that there might be some interest?
Oh, yes. Uh, Doug asked me to join him and so I did, except he didn't join me. I, I went to lunch last week at the Kiwanis and I brought this up and they said that they would love to as long as it's still, or Saturday of the month.
Yeah.
They're not changing their.
No, no, and that's what.
And I told them that we can change ours, because we haven't really set a precedent so far.
So, the one thing that we did benefit from is the week prior, is that it gave people the ability to advertise it through that parade. So, it wasn't like, oh, the same day, why had other plans? They were able to actually say, okay, and they can make it, they have it. So, that's kind of the question.
So, I guess the question is, is what are we really asking them? You know, because they, or, or what, and what are they gonna get out of it? Or, you know, all those type of things. How much work are they gonna have to put into it? All, all that type of stuff. What are we really? You know, what, what do we think it really looks like?
Yeah, so my question is, as to the councils, why I put it on here was, um, do you think it serves our citizens? Because that's really who we're, this is about, the Citizens Day. Does it, does it, do you, is it in their best interest to ha, tie it in with, after the parade? And kind of make a, a day of the parade into the city, or is it better to keep them separated? Because we do have a lot going on for our Citizens Day and there's people talking and, you know, car show and. Do we keep it separate? That's the question here.
I think a lot of people have always asked me, well, and have made comments, well, there's a parade. Then it ends abruptly, then what? And they're, they, everyone's kind of, well, that's it. Is there a place to go eat? Uh, well, what are they gonna do with their kids and whatever? It seems to me like a perfect fit. We integrate those two together, uh, I, I think it would be an, an exceptionally perfect fit. Not only that, my Karmic Park's on, uh, you know, just off the parade route. It's in the middle of everything. I, I just think, and here you have the, the roadsters and the old cars show up and, and they're in the parade as well. I mean, it, it's, it's a good fit, the way I see it.
What do you think?
The more people we get into town at the one time, the better off it is.
And especially locals.
Locals, yeah, because we're gonna surround them. We're kinda rounding the wagons up and they can't get out. But, yeah, the more people we have come to St. Helens for an event, the better off it is.
So, we'd have to modify it to be more of a dinner than a lunch, because, because we're gonna all wanna be involved in the parade too.
Hot dogs are hot dogs. What the heck? You know, I mean, it's, it isn't like it's a sit-down dinner with four.
Maybe a modified time of like, serve at four, so we can be done at five thirty.
It's called, it's called the barbecue down.
I'm looking at staff, because I depend on, you, these guys do a lot of work around this. You guys need to know that.
So, that's, that's one reason maybe to make it more shared, because, yeah, I mean, down, down the road. Is it gonna become something we're gonna have to pay our staff to put on, or will it be volunteers? So, by, by maybe bringing in the other group, service groups, so much, we can keep it volunteer.
Exactly. Of all the places we need, we need volunteers or a reason for volunteers to get together. We can say, oh, the Kiwanis guys are doing it, why aren't you?
Exactly.
Well, I think it is a great thing though. It's received very well, even though we did spend a little bit of money on it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I think we do, so you guys know, um.
Well, like I say, the food bill's just gonna go up and up and up, so.
We've been graced with.
We don't want labor in there too.
The IGA has graced us with that stuff, uh, you know, knock on wood. I've offered to pay, they have, you know, at least part.
Right.
And they haven't taken it yet, so.
That day, I, I volunteered at the, uh, First Methodist Church and we have a chicken barbecue. And it's, it's pretty massive. I mean, there's a lot of chicken they've had. There hasn't been a time that we haven't sold out. It's sold out very early. So, yeah, people are hungry. People want places to go and some, someplace to go for their kids and have a, a picnic. I, it's, it'd be perfect. I think it's a good fit.
Oh, okay, Doug. Now, do they charge over at the Methodist Church?
Yes, they do.
So, we could have all the churches and other things, hey, you can get chicken over there or barbecue buffalo over there or whatever. It's kind of a fundraiser too.
Yeah. I would, the church I really would wanna step in on, you can smell that cooking for years. It's been cooked down in that little hole.
Well, that's, that's how much of a gourmet.
Forty years. I mean, that's a tradition going back almost as long as the parade itself.
But still, we've got the community together.
Yeah, you, you.
The other thing I was gonna mention that is, I mean, Kiwanis big moneymaker and is for dorm backers. Hillary Hospital. So, you could put a donation can out for dorm backers or something. And if the other organizations, you're right, we, it could be, kinda like Mount Angel, Oktoberfest, all, all the service organizations do all the booths and all that. And if somebody wants to, you, you can, you can go for a free hamburger or hot dog, or you can go over and purchase a barbecued chicken or whatever, you know? Could be all kinds of, because maybe someday the whole town might be there, you know?
Well, it'd be a good place to, uh, to create the trophy winners from the parade. There, you know, and it, it, it just, I think it's a better entity for the Kiwanis parade. And, uh, that's what it is now.
The question I have is the Kiwanis volunteers that will be helping with. The question I have is the Kiwanis volunteers that will be helping with Citizens Day, aren't they participating in the parade? So, I mean, they may be like, I don't wanna do the Citizens Day.
Holy babe.
Well, that's the thing, you're right, because, yeah, we start at, some of us start at five in the morning, but the others start usually at nine and go till one or two, so they've already got for you.
So maybe it would just look like this. We'd do a collaborative effort that maybe we could get some city staff to help us out, start setting up around noon. And then, I mean, you could do some of it a little earlier, but, uh, we take that part and they, they worry about the parade part. And it's collaborative, that's kind of sharing responsibilities. When you think about the parade, it's a lot of work. And the same with the Citizens Day is a lot of work. So the city shares that side and the Kiwanis share that side and.
And the other groups we can get in, they can share too.
Yeah, absolutely. All volunteers are welcome.
Yep.
Said that from the start. You know, American Heritage Girls, uh, helped out quite a bit with that. Did you say it would, would they, they'd be in the parade itself?
They would be in the parade, that would be the biggest.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, they don't have to be like a Kiwanians there super early, what, ten thirty? Lose you, they ask you to be there, ten thirty, eleven?
I thi- yeah, I think closer to ten for judging and.
Yeah.
It's around ten, yeah. Ten, eleven is judging.
Start a little earlier and finish decorating.
We could also invite for the barbecue, other service groups like Lions and Rotary to participate in that.
And the Verrines.
Have it a Citizens Day service day, uh, uh, in the park. I mean, I, I, I see that not only Kiwanis doing the parade, but also, uh, the, the Lions Club, which is a big part of McCormick, McCormick Park, uh, maintenance and Rotary as well. I, it's just, it makes sense to me to build.
So could we do, can you guys, next meeting, we'll come back and reach out to those that you know and see what you can come up with, what will I have to be willing to commit?
Will do.
You know, whoever you can find, uh, you know, there's a lot of nonprofits out there that they wanna come set up too. We, tables are free for nonprofits to come down.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, and we'll talk about it, I mean, a little bit more. But Kiwanis, if they're willing to, you know, that day, I didn't wanna step on anybody's toes.
Right.
You know, a little bit, you guys are just.
I know, I think it's a good idea. I mean, anytime you have two things on the same day, it's a great idea.
Oh, it is.
Okay, so, um, we view Public Works Director's job description and recruitment timeline, Sean.
All right, so the handout here is a, uh, advised job description, can it, I can go through the points of what specific edits are. Or suggested edits are, and the other is the schedule for the recruitment process. Perhaps we can just take it in order here, the recruitment process we're looking at. Actually being ready to do a, Kathy's working on a announcement. Go out to places listed here as far as the Oregonian statesmen here. Oregon cities. Pretty soon, February, next week-ish.
Are there private places that do this kind of recruitment?
There's, most certainly are. There's a number of headhunter recruiter types that we receive mailings through all the time. The price tag is about twenty to thirty thousand-ish for a department type.
What's the cost to us by the time we go through the, all the process?
Well, you still have the same process. We, we still do, they, they bring it to us for our, for all the paneling and the.
They narrow it down though, right?
They get, they have a pretty.
But they also go nationwide though.
They go, they go, yeah, nation or regional, yeah.
Where would those funds come from?
You can, you can pay money to have, I mean, the city can pay money to have our job posting on their website. So like I C M I, I C M A or Prothman or all those other agencies, they sell advertising so that we can put our.
Oh, okay. Where would those, where would those funds come from?
Right now, they come out of my advertising budget, but which.
We have thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars sitting aside.
Seventeen cents.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, you, uh, uh, that wasn't the price for advertising.
Yeah, the price for advertising is a few hundred bucks maybe.
Yeah. No, they happen in a different comp- uh, company.
Do it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, with that level of service, they're doing direct mail and calling and.
Right.
Trying to poach people away from other clients they have, keep the merry-go-round going.
There's one red flag that's fixed that, uh, stands out for, uh, for me and that's because, uh, we had a glitch on it. Uh, to public works directors ago. And that was to fly someone in from across the country. And the guy comes in and interviews and after his interview, he says, thank you very much, now I can go visit my daughter in Tacoma, she's getting married.
That, that was one of the questions we had as far as the policy on travel expenses.
That hurt because he was one of the three finalists or whatever and all they wanted was a plane ticket here on, you know, from the city.
It went steady a little bit. Can't blame the guy, was smart. He worked the system.
So I, you know, I'm reluctant and hesitant about paying transportation and hotel and lodging, I mean. Uh, I can certainly see lodging, uh, while they're here, uh, but I'm reluctant about the, uh, transportation. And if it is transportation, it could be so much a mile or whatever, but I don't know. I mean, it's, that was, that was a big hit for us and it was very embarrassing. Uh, so I think.
Somebody putting in for a job like this should be able to pay their own transportation.
I would think, I would think. And, and I do think lodging is a different thing. I, you know, that makes sense to me.
Well, yeah, I mean, stay around while you.
The next question is if we would get, say, somebody from Maryland, would you pay his moving expenses?
We can negotiate that.
That's, that's negotiable.
Because again, a lot of big companies, they'll fly a number of people, but moving is part of the deal. And a lot of times when you advertise headhunters, get the money for headhunting from them, not from us. And that goes both ways. That, that's again, something you have to look into.
I think that's been negotiable in the past. How much the city would pay, what we would look at, and that would be a council decision. And I think it would factor in on, in some senses, in our decision.
Well, one of the problems is if you limit travel, you're basically keeping anybody from out of state coming here, which may not be a good idea.
Well, if somebody wants to come here, they're gonna pay.
Yeah, again, as I say, it, it isn't a yes or no type answer. It's a, it hurts some, helps others.
I think you should at least keep an open mind.
Exactly.
Depending on the application that comes in, you may see a rock star that looks awesome on paper that you may wanna fly in from Las Vegas or, um, those places, so.
Hopefully with more trees than Vegas though.
Is there anybody good in Las Vegas?
They all left.
Well played.
Okay, so yeah, those were actually things that we wanted to talk about as part of, part of the schedule as far as creating the advertisement, creating people's expectations. Where the city council was at with mileage or airfare or hotels and it sounds like, you know, housing relocation costs and things of that nature, but, um, I think we got direction on that. Somewhat receptive.
Once the, once the.
I see the word may in there somewhere.
Once the position goes out, people are gonna be calling and saying, do you pay for the travel expenses? So if we're going to go out, we need to know these things right up front.
I would, I would say no at this point. And I would say, or I would, I would, I would quantify that with, yes, we, we, we could offer your lodging expenses. And that's what, think about it, you know, if you, if it's travel expenses, it goes to the airlines. If it's lodging, it comes into our community. And so I, I, as a, as, as a plus, and I think that, I think that if someone's so interested in the, in that job that they can. I mean, I would.
Well, and people are, if they're applying for the job and they're, obviously, they're gonna expect to travel. You know, I'm just one of those people that I'm not, I'm not a big fan of paying people's way to come. And, and that's why, is because of the people. Even though you get somebody who has a great application, he may just be putting applications in all over just so he can get a fully paid expense.
You're exactly right.
So that's why I'm not in favor of paying for their expenses. It would have to be some sort of extenuating circumstance where we would actually do that. But I definitely think that paying for their moving expenses is something that would be definitely negotiable.
Negotiable.
One of the problems is Oregon's a big state. And the other states around us are big and there's a lot of distance and not a whole lot of people. And you really, really limit the type of people you have. Now, I've moved around the country and interviewed a number of places and my travel's always been covered. Even internationally. It shows you're awful cheap. That's the type of people you want, only the people who can get here. You know, Benz is a long way for miles, Hermiston's even worse. Wanna try to travel from Salt Lake?
Well, on the other hand, it shows not that the city's cheap, it shows that the candidate's cheap. What you want, we're looking at candidates.
Okay, play it that way.
Well, no, you said if the city, if the city's cheap for not doing that, then why not consider, why not consider the candidate?
Okay, let, let's look at the other thing we've gotta worry about. We've got the lowest income in the state of Oregon and we're going downhill as a city. So our advertising, well, this is a great place, when it comes to our standard background salaries, we're not high on that list. We're trying to improve the place and we should show that we're going to try to get after good people. If we're gonna start putting limits on them ahead of time.
I mean, in reality, I mean, what, what are you, what are we gonna accept? I mean, we're gonna go through the applications and just accept so many, right?
Right.
What, what is that number?
Well, probably, it could be, it's up to you guys, but it'd be five or six.
Yeah, so at the most, you're probably looking at half of those or maybe something. It's not a huge number. It's really, you're right, if we want the right person here. And it's an option. You don't have to accept the application if you don't wanna pay some base wages, you know, so anyway. I think we just leave it as an option and, and decide at the time, you know. Do we want this person to come here or not? Are we willing to pay for his plane ticket?
Well, I, I agree with Kathy, with somehow we've gotta have a standard for across the board with what we're going to pay for. And we can't make up our mind that we're going to fly this guy and we aren't gonna fly this guy.
Yes, you can, because we looked at his application and this guy looks better than that guy. We can make a decision on that. Remember, we're trying to hire him and we're, we are setting up what we wanna see in a person. If we see a lot of good things, if we see a whole bunch of things that are really good, but we don't want, why fly him in? I, you know, if we say we're not gonna pay for you to come here unless you pay your own flight, a really good guy's, you know, whatever.
Well, she has to answer that question when people call in. I, will.
Will be determined by your application.
So are we still on the front page here? I'm sorry, I'm just enjoying my cookie.
Good, keep enjoying.
So can I, can I word it that way, Kathy, that if you're, if you're qualified, then possibly, or?
Depending upon your qualifications.
Yeah.
Yes.
Qualifications.
I don't, I don't even think we would advertise that we would pay their travel expenses.
No.
That they would.
Oh, yes, if they called, yeah, right.
Okay, so then somebody calls me and says, you know, will you pay my travel expenses? Well, just a minute, well, actually, you'll have to wait until the next council meeting to discuss this.
No, the answer is, our policy is, we will answer that after we see your application.
Well, yeah, well, I'm, I'm saying like, after the application is in my hand.
Okay, but then we'll look at it, we can, we'll tell.
That's after the next council meeting, like you said.
Well, whatever, but it's still, we now know a lot about him. We've got his application. We didn't say, send us an application, oh, I'm not gonna send an application, cause you're not gonna fly me in there. We didn't say that. We're gonna determine that after we look at his application.
Can we say if you're, if you're accepted for an interview, then we'll pay for your.
Yeah.
Travel expenses then?
So we've got, so we've got five candidates. We've paid for two candidates' travel.
No, we've got five candidates.
No, hey, let me finish.
Okay.
We've got five candidates and we've paid for two candidates' travel. We interview all five. And the two, and the other three candidates find out that we've paid for two. I think there's a lawsuit there. I think that, well, there's, I don't think it's fair.
I, I can say just from recently traveling for an interview, that I, myself and three other individuals were paid to travel down there, hotel mileage. And there were two internal applicants that were not paid for their mileage or something, cause they were in town. I mean, that's kind of the way of a department manager's, I mean, if you live in the city, obviously, we're not gonna pay you to come.
Right.
Uh, I don't think there's a lawsuit.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I said, let's say they all came from one, they all came from across the nation. Okay, so it has nothing to do with whether you're in town or, or not. It's like, are you paying for the airline tickets in and back? And possibly you do that in and back again for their final, uh, it starts to mount up after a bit. Okay, so then, there's two, there's, there's two that you've paid for and three that you haven't. Because of their, because of their application, right? And that's my point, is is that if we do it for one, we've gotta do it for all five. And that's, that, that creates a fair standard. That's all.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I thought you were saying the other way of you, you'd have a lawsuit if the local people didn't get paid, so I.
So maybe as a suggestion, um, I've been involved in this process, uh, a lot of agencies or cities have Skype, preliminary Skype interviews or a FaceTime interview for out-of-state applicants to prescreen them. Um, so you know, you know, who you're getting before you, uh, you know, cause they could be, instead of them flying out here from New York City and then you find out it's not a good fit, uh, you do, you know, just put it in a, uh, testing process of a Skype interview as part of the process. And then the answer to anybody calling in, and we'll just be personally, if that's the first question they ask, more than likely, probably not a good candidate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with the counselors, but, um, then you can whittle it down to your top three candidates and then you'd make a decision, yes, we will pay for travel, whatever the council decides. But there, you know, there's other options out there, a Skype interview, so you can actually see them face to face and you can, you can glean a lot of information off a candidate from an interview.
I like that idea because it, if, you know, the guy who came in here last time and, and said, you know, well, my daughter's just happened to have her wedding in, in Tacoma or whatever. Thank you very much. Guess what?
That's what we did with Gretchen.
Our number one pick. You know, we thought, we're very highly of that guy. And then he walked.
Well, he pointed out that there's one defect in his personality he didn't want. Up until that time, he was good. That one defect is the reason not to have it. Uh, that's what you want to find out.
I think the Skype thing could handle that.
Remember, this person is gonna be handling what kind of, how many million dollars of budget over the next ten or twenty years?
Yeah.
You're bickering about a couple of thousand bucks and we're worried about what he's gonna, how he's gonna handle a few million.
Okay, so we're like, on what line item are we? Cause I don't, who's exactly what line item we're on?
Hey, we forgot.
And we are like behind, I, I'm not trying to, but I am, Department of Reports starts at three forty and it's three forty-nine. So, and we also have public hearings later, just so you guys know, we'll be back here at six thirty.
We can, we can forego our council reports.
So I'm gonna ask you to judge through this.
Standing the travel-related issues. It's about a four-week, four-week recruitment, it, it's set up as an open and filled, we're gonna do a first review in four weeks. Thirteenth, thirteenth of March. Uh, we're gonna get those interviews, get the applications in, see what's there. And they'll be reviewed by whoever you decide. You know, if you wanna do that as a body, that's, we have to have it at a council meeting, an open session. Executive session, material. Executive session material, if you want to have a subset, have the, you know, the department liaison, mayor look at it, want the whole council to look at it individually and get things.
Narrowed down.
Narrowed down, um, need to get a sense of that.
Couldn't it just be a workshop? It'd be a workshop of narrowing down applicants, we're not making a decision, because we're just narrowing it down.
Well, we are making, we're making a decision.
Well.
My experience with that.
But it could be a workshop, though, it's a.
Things get a little fast and loose and the reasons you qualify or disqualify somebody is.
A public record.
Public, public record and it's, um, so you'd be really careful.
Yeah, what you say about candidates and why you're not picking them and everything can, it's on the record.
That's why I'm saying a workshop.
That isn't work, you mean with a forum?
Yeah.
That's a public meeting. That'd be recorded, televised, all that kind of stuff. What I would suggest is.
Why don't we just have a committee and have two counselors on it, something like that.
Counselors, and I'm part of the governing process, so that's, it'd be appropriate for.
Yeah.
Couple of staff and then a couple of citizens, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, let's do that.
I would certainly, uh, uh, like to see it. Some stakeholders, um, like Andrew Naimy, for example, uh, who's been involved in our, in our city. Engineering and all the work that he's done. Someone like him, uh, on the committee, uh, that has experience in, with our city.
About Chris Harrison.
Working with Public Works, uh, people who are, are stakeholders. And I could see a, I could see it much like our budget committee, almost an even mix of stakeholders in the community as well as council. So if there's three council, there might be three, three stakeholders as well.
If there's three counselors, that's a quorum.
Yep.
So it would have to be two counselors.
Whatever.
So which two counselors?
Well, let's, let's stop a minute, real quick. If I'm interviewing, I don't want to go before a committee until I see the people I've got to deal with. So I'm gonna, would like as an interviewer, see the people who I'm gonna be over, at least those department heads. Then I will go in front of a committee, but if I go through a committee, uh, I'll tell you as an interviewer, I don't think that's a very good idea. Because I'm gonna be ganged up on and I don't have a person-to-person idea, I'm gonna refuse it.
Well, you're thinking maybe possibly about the very last stage. We're thinking about sorting, sorting out the applicants at first, if we have twenty applicants. Somebody can take those applicants and screen them and that's kind of where.
Okay, well, the screening is one thing, the interviewing.
Interviewing a different thing.
So that, that, that's where we're at right now, we're talking about screening, the screening process, let's make it two counselors, uh, some staff. Skype here in this room, on TV, should be able to be done, interviews. That way we know and get a recommendation from the staff and a few counselors on these are your finalists right here. And then we can do like we did with the police and we can have the double interviews going on and swinging back and forth. And make a day of it, right? That's how it should go, is that correct? This is a big, this is exactly how it should go, that's fair.
But we've done with several department heads.
Let, let's ask the last guy we interviewed, how do you like it as a person trying to get the job?
Uh, going through the process, it was very easy up here. Uh, one of the areas I would, um, not do, gonna recommend is to have a subordinate interviewing a possible department, department head. Uh, specifically if you have an interim, uh, because that puts the, it's just, it's just, I mean, it's, it's awkward, it's unprofessional, actually, I, I believe. Is that you're having people that you potentially could lead, um, ask you questions. And the questions they ask aren't the questions that should be asked. They ask questions at the, uh, worker level instead of global vision, visionary questions that we expect of our department heads. So that's just me going through the process, again, not to, I'm very, very thankful and grateful for this position. But go, you know, if we had to do it again, I, I would recommend not doing that portion of it. Um, and have people in the community, um, select a person and have the questions geared towards that, the, a department head. Um, and so I would, I would also pre-screen the questions you want to ask and see, you know, but that, that's just my take on it. The double interviews, Mr. Mayor, I, I get it. Uh, if there's two community panels, um, I think also at the end, the community meet and greet should be more of a question-answer. I think it was more of just kinda, you just gave five minutes about yourself, which is important, but I think that should be rolled into, um, it almost being at a state, you know, where, where the, they, they have opportunity to ask you direct pointed questions. Challenges of St. Helens, it's, you know, the participation level is probably not where we'd like it to be, so, um, that's just food for thought.
Pretty good roomful of people too for that.
It was, if I could just be open and candidly, it was all, it was police department, uh, family members and media. There was not one person from the community here, so. And I'm not trying to, I just, it was, that's just my take on it. Um, I talked to Joe about it and, you know, we, we both said, uh, it was different, it was a great pro, it was good because you found, humbly, I think you found the right person. I don't, but the reason was because it was so, I guess, and I don't lose sight of this, it was, it was intimate. And that's what this community is about, it's about knowing your neighbors and intimate. So I think that, not to, you can't lose sight of that. I just thought, you know, uh, it could have been just a little different, but I, I enjoyed it thoroughly. I thought, I can tell you, coming to St. Helens in that process, it was not adversarial, it was not, um, nerve-wracking, although it's human nature to be nervous. It, it, in everybody's demeanor, you know, so having the right people on the board was important as well. Because you guys were welcoming and warm and I'm not trying to blow smoke or anything here, it really was. I mean, so, but humbly, I think if you had to change anything, I would, I would steer away from having subordinates ask a potential department head questions. Because it's just.
Yeah.
It's awkward, um, and it's, it's just, to me, I, I think it kinda doesn't validate the process as much as if you just had community members and, and the council asking those questions. I think that kinda sets the tone for, you know, the questions that would be asked. Because the questions I got asked by the, you know, the officers weren't questions that I should have been asked. They, they were questions that wasn't about where, you know, strategic planning, where you want to take the department, you know, progressiveness. It was more of, hey, could I, you know, change the color of my socks and, you know, as an example, and I.
How do you feel about tattoos?
Yeah. Just kidding. Thank you for letting me.
So a lot of what we're talking about right now is the nuance of the difference between our governing policy and the council or council manager. Traditional type of decision where the council would say, we have some good candidates to confirm to the council. And, uh, we're good in it, but not, you know, all in, all in or all out, there's, it's a. Just wouldn't, I mean, that, that, that's the difference right there. This was a council manager form, you would go hire us a, uh, the most qualified applicant, we would go through that, we'd go out, we'd bring, bring that. We'd develop interview panels, you'd, we'd have subsets with probably a few counselors on one, a few counselors on another panel. So they get a chance to meet this person and go through the circle and.
I certainly wouldn't, I, I would not mind seeing the staff, you, in particular with, uh, key staff. Go through the screening process and possibly someone, a couple stakeholders from the community. If, uh, the council's not involved on the screening process. But the interview process, I think, is, uh, I think is heavily weighed on the, on the, on the council. So talked about those two processes, I wouldn't mind seeing.
The council doesn't need to be, I think it'd be, if there's different, you know, where we've had two or even three groups before, they have the opportunity to be a part of two in that group, two in this group, or, or do it in an open session at eleven o'clock, so.
Well, I'm just wondering after listening to Chief talk, is it, when we get down to that point, do we deliberate with council? And do we have, we, we as council invite a member of the community of our, our N, an equal member of a St. Helens resident, whether they be a builder or whatever, into that meeting? And we have very limited staff there because this guy's gonna be their boss, as you can see.
Absolutely not.
And deliberate.
Absolutely not, I think it should be a council deliberation.
You don't want no public input on it, you know?
I want public input, yeah, because they, each one of those groups, well.
So what I'm saying is, like I say, okay.
Okay.
I, no, that's what I'm saying, it's like you want to bring Andrew Naimy, you bring Andrew Naimy. I want to bring Wayne Mike or Randy May, I'd bring Randy May. Or whoever, Bud Hickey, I want to bring Bud Hickey or whoever, I want them to sit in on this, you know?
On our deliberation for final pick.
On the deliberation for final pick, yes.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be, the Skype is gonna be that. The interview for that is gonna be a checkoff sheet that everybody's gonna get more than likely. And I hope it has some really good questions on it that are public works related. And, uh, maybe, maybe you want a neighboring county, somebody to come over from the county. It's not affiliated with any of the staff.
I agree with that.
I don't know.
I agree with that.
I've just thrown it out there.
I agree with that.
I'm not technically, when it comes to public works director, I don't know shit, otherwise I'd be applying. I said that very quiet, I hope these mics are.
They're gonna pick it up, trust me.
Damn it. I apologize.
Say anything quiet.
I apologize.
So I would see, I would think that the, the final selection would be, uh, uh, five council members and five stakeholders in the community.
Maybe Tommy Fisher, maybe he would know something about.
We can talk about that.
I just have to ask, I'm sorry, but is there a difference between having them, the individual stakeholders on a committee during the interview process? And having that community group or whatever versus having them in a final deliberation where you as a council are gonna?
Yeah, there is a difference.
I know, but there's, I, I've never heard of a city having final deliberations of a department head with community members present. You may hear from community members, get feedback from them, get their reports on what they thought of them sitting on the interview panels and that kind of thing. And then you take that information and you guys make, and you guys.
Is this gonna be a point system? Let me ask you this.
The, doing a point system is the best way to account for veterans' preference and we have to account for veterans' preference. Otherwise, you set yourself up for a lawsuit.
Do we have to do a point system is what I'm asking?
I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, if that's the case, I disagree with that, that it should not be up to this. I think it should be up to a bunch of open ears, because that point system's what we have to go by.
But, but that's happens during the interview process.
Interview process will be a point system, but then those two interview groups will decide, here's, here's our order.
Here's our scores.
Here's our scores, and that will come to the council.
Yes.
And then you make a final determiner, you as a body make, and John make a final determination.
We have to follow that point system.
Mr. Mayor, you can simply add, uh, awaited, a, a separate council interview at the end, sir. Where you have, and, and it could be forty percent weighted on the community interview, sixty percent weighted on the council interview. That would allow you, because you're really looking at, it could be, they could select, if it's the point system, somebody that's maybe not the best. Maybe it's the best speaker, but maybe not qualified. So that allows you to, you know, have a say-so because they're directly working for you, sir.
That's why I want to make sure I bring somebody in, if it's me, I want somebody like an engineer or somebody like, that does construction, that. Because I don't know everything there is to know, but they, they can probably give me lip service and sell themselves to me.
And I also just say one more piece here, is that you gotta just continue to remember, this is a leader of a department. So they should have some familiarity with public works, but they're really, they're gonna be, they're leading people. And that's where they're, you know, humbly, if that's where their strengths lie is, you know, kind of thing is that, uh, you know, they should have some background and know whatever, you know, engineering, but the reality is, is that they're not gonna be digging the ditch or, you know, excuse. But they're going to be knowing how it gets done or how to motivate people or how to hold people accountable. And I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that, sir, so I'm not trying to get in your area, but.
I, I agree, and I, I also suggest that in our final, with the council, in their fin, in the final picking, that our city manager be involved in that vote because they will, he is the one that they will be reporting to. And I think he is essential, that person is essential in the pick. I don't agree with other department heads on the pick, but I do agree that it should go from five to six with our, with our city manager.
Well, we know we want Skype for sure to, to get that narrowed down, right? That we agree on. I'm just trying to get through this, this is a, a lot of our discussion, I'm working on the agenda. It's four oh five now. We've been at it for a half hour and I'm okay with trudging through this, but we have to.
It's a good discussion, Mayor.
I know.
Are we okay, John? You got clear?
Oh, yeah.
There's mine, there's mine.
There's a screening process, I'm, I'm, I'm just going literally off the governing policy, right? And then I'm kind of looking at the collaborative process, it doesn't, you know, it's.
I think we're gonna do the same thing we've always.
Yeah, the same, it's, yeah. So, open and filled, till filled, first review on, on March thirteenth. We're going to have screened, we're going to, um, come up with a pool of high, the most qualified applicants. Set the interview date, kind of somewhat address the travel expenses as being maybe, hotels probably.
John, while, while, um, you're discussing the dates, I don't, um, I don't know how set these are, but I'm somewhat interested in this position. And I will be at a conference on April eighth through the tenth, the dates that you have set for an interview.
Okay, Brian.
Got caught, John.
We'll have to Skype.
Well, it looks like the interviews are gonna be open till October, so we've got some, we've got some time.
Yeah, ten, twenty.
This is just a four-week timeline that Kathy and I literally worked out this morning. Kathy and I just came up with this morning to try to, you know, what's, text as early as possible, chronology of events. You know, a six-week window, which.
Is that how you're.
Applications in.
At first.
Or either a five or six week window, it's only a four-week window right here if council's receptive to.
We'll, we'll make sure you're in town.
Advance it to five, to a five-week window, which is a holiday week. We're not gonna pay your hotel.
Five-week window, yes.
So we're budgeting some time for, um, just administrative pieces of that. That advertisement out, if we're gonna do a second interview, invite people back, we're trying to do it on a Thursday or Friday and then do the second interviews on a Monday, Thursday, and then have a second interview on Friday. And, you know, yep. Mid-May is being a desired report to work date.
So should we talk about the tall description?
Yeah, we probably should, I already looked through it.
I think it should be fairly quick. On the next page, so this was last done in December of seventeen. There were a couple of changes there to accommodate. Yeah, there was, there was some change, revisions, but in general purpose, we're adding just the different positions that weren't in the old one. The language, water filtration. Water treatment divisions. This notion of, uh, a lot of this description is real manager-centric and, and positions the chief brought it up already was the leader of the department component, we're trying to build that into drop application or air, narrative in the advertisement. That people are somebody that's solutions-oriented and is, and is the administrative lead of that department, where it's a vision and future. That's not, I don't think that's really well captured here. Uh, supervision, it is changed to reflect the governing policy where the person who reports to the administrator and the council lead, lead. That the supervisor exercised, we are adding positions that were previously included. Updating some of the language, about position titles. Under essential duties, we're trying, you know, the language changes, you can see there, exchanging departments to divisions and second page, I'm not sure why there's four words there, but it's kind of awkward. Page three of five, the, the desired minimum qualifications, we're getting, removing the word desired. We are striking the words professional engineer or master's degree in related fields required or is highly, highly desirable to an advanced degree preferred.
I think you might have a problem there. If you're doing engineering work in this state, you need a PE on the, your official acceptance. You can have a PE and not have an undergraduate degree in engineering.
That maybe.
But that kinda gets put in by experience.
So we would still have, we still have a city engineer position on staff.
Yeah, okay, minimum five years, you could not get a PE with a minimum of five years coming out of a four year school. It's a lot longer than that. So you're kinda stepping on your own. You, I would expect there's some certifications for public works.
There is the, there.
Only to do the work.
To do the work, yes.
But like Jenny, who's a planner, has put in a certain amount of time and gone through a certain group of tests to get a certification. There's probably certifications for.
Absolutely, okay, yeah, water operators, water operators, distribution certifications.
Right, this guy isn't gonna be operating anything.
This person is the director of the department, they're not necessarily going to be the one drawing up the engineering plans or twisting knobs or adding chlorine to the water or anything like that.
As I say, I, going back to what our police chief says, you don't wanna have someone who's more qualified under you.
I don't think that's what the police chief said.
I need some qualifications to go over my engineers and my other people.
I don't believe that's what the police chief said, Councilwoman.
When in his interview, he said he didn't want the people working for him being one of the interviewers.
Correct, it's nothing about them being more educated or having a degree.
Qualified, don't use the word educated because you can be educated and not know anything. Qualified or having some certification or qualification.
Okay, so let's continue on, guys.
The purpose there is, this position is the administrative head of the department. The, you know, that they do have, under the qualifications that they, you know, have some higher level four year education with advanced degrees preferred. We want them to have some experience in, in public works related positions, a minimum of five years and before it was two years where it was again to be, you know, from three to five years in a supervisory position. And then lastly, there's a catchall that this is most applications, any equivalent combination of education experience, which may seem a little redundant, but it's appears just to go everywhere. And then on the last page, it's just removing, I don't have a lot of drafting instruments, I don't have drafting tables anymore.
Okay, good. Keep that.
And I push back a little bit on, I spent my career hiring the most qualified people I can be rounded there. A lot of times, I see my education in lots of different areas, legal and engineering and, you know, police and everything and it's orchestration of talent, as much as this position's all around that.
All right, play your fiddle, John.
Play my fiddle?
Yes, orchestrate it. All right, department reports.
Broken strings. One thing to report, uh, Mr. Mayor is that next Wednesday, Coco with the cop at the St. Helens Burgerville, Wednesday, February twelfth from five to seven. It is a joint, uh, meeting with Columbia County sheriffs and Columbia City Police, so we look to see all of our residents there to come out and create Valentine's cookies and have Coco meet the law enforcement from the immediate area, so that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. Wednesday, uh, February twelfth, next Wednesday from five to seven at Burgerville.
We have a meeting. That's our joint meeting.
Both of the articles?
Well, they have a drive thru.
So again, good police work, uh, if you're not aware that there is a bust here in St. Helens with some drugs, guns, body armor, counterfeit money, fraudulent stuff and, um, the streets are a lot safer cause of it.
Thank you, and that was completely officers, self-initiated that, and they, they have a commitment to this community. And so, thank you, I'll pass the word on this, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, good work.
So, hey, Sue.
Did, did you decide not to discuss the council goal?
Um, yeah, I did.
You gave up on the council? There were some comments that we, we heard last week about removing some additional fence on the veneer properties, so Public Works is getting ready to, to remove down at the end of Plymouth Street, the fencing that goes up through Nob Hill Nature Park, along the hillside there. And probably replace the derelict gates with some bollards and a, and a reflective chain and with a pedestrian pathway to go around the side of it. So it's, look much nicer down there. They've been, our Public Works crew has been extremely proactive about getting on these projects when we've gotten some requests regarding that. We have a water line project out for bid right now, it bids next Tuesday, it opens next Tuesday, um, for three streets in St. Helens to replace some undersized water lines and also be able to install fire hydrants on those streets. And other than that, I've been working on, starting to work on the budget, Matt's been sending out his budget request sheets, so starting to look at that for the year twenty twenty one. And the Gable Road project, that's starting to see some visible progress. They were hoping to do some paving on Monday, but it turned out to be too cold, so with a little break in the weather, they might be able to get their paving in by the end of the week this week. And they are tentatively looking at pouring concrete on the south side of the roadway next week. Again, it's all weather dependent, can't be too cold, can't be too wet. Regardless, they're gonna be moving across the street to the north side and starting to excavate and form up for sidewalks on the north side of the sidewalk. And, and again, it's all has to fit in with the weather, but definitely making, making great progress on that now. That you can actually see rather than the underground utility work.
On the north side, obviously that's gonna go a lot faster than the south side, there, there wouldn't be as much infrastructure under the pavement and that kind of thing. I mean, there was a lot of work over on the south side.
So there was a, a lot of work on the south side mainly to do with the storm improvements, because there was virtually no storm drainage for that whole entire roadway. So that's, that's what the majority of the work that they've been doing for the last several months was to get that system installed. There will be a little bit more excavation, they've got more driveways to deal with on the north side of the road. So that's, that's one logistical thing that they'll have to go through, so the, the actual sidewalk construction may take a little bit longer on the north side. But once they get the sidewalks port on the south, the traffic flow will move to the other side of the road, so the north side will be closed. So that they can get their workers in and out of there safely and, um, they'll get sidewalks open on the south side. They anticipate that with some good weather luck by the end of next week.
Could you give us an update on the Pittsburgh Vernonia Road, well Vernonia?
North Vernonia Road?
Yeah, on, on the engineering part of that and will that be in place for the school year next fall and summer?
Probably looking at construction, it may, it may last a little bit into the beginning of the school year, but that's the goal, is to get that out and get that constructed during the summer months, this, it's gonna be a busy construction season.
Comments on that, when? Since we did promise that subdivision people and all those people who came in and filled our councils that we would have a sidewalk in there.
Right, yeah, we had two major changes with that project and one was instead of just going with the sidewalk on one side of the road, deciding to go with the sidewalk on both sides of the road, just for efficiencies and, and cost, overall cost efficiencies. And then the issue with the trees, being able to meander the sidewalk in and out to avoid taking down as many trees, there will still have to be trees removed unfortunately. Right now, we're trying to figure out the, the ninety degree corner there at Fran Street. Not at MacArthur, but the, the main ninety degree corner there, trying to figure out some options to be able to get around there. There's already an encroachment of the road on the private property on the inside of the corner. And so, if we left the roadway exactly where it is, a sidewalk obviously is going to create a larger encroachment. So there is not an easement on that corner, but I'm talking with the property owners who are very cooperative and, and very nice people to try to work out some solution that'll be advantageous to both parties. And then there are also, the engineers are looking at doing some additional speed control, like some permanent, potentially some permanent speed display radar signs on approaching from both directions. And moving the alignment just a little bit to help get around that corner without as heavy of an encroachment.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah, absolutely, anytime. That's all I have.
Hey, Margaret?
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday, we're celebrating the fifth birthday of the St. Helens Public Library Ukulele Orchestra. They've developed a program about the history of the ukulele and they'll be telling us a little bit about that and playing representative songs from each period in time. And then we're gonna have birthday cake at noon, so the formal program starts at eleven fifteen, but they're there starting at ten thirty, so you can come in and get settled and listen to a little warm up music if you're a little early. But I just felt it was important to acknowledge their contribution, I think they're a real cultural asset in the community. And they do a lot of performances in venues like, um, community events, assisted living centers. They're just out there and ready to play most any time they're asked.
How much does that build up in terms of participants? I mean, what's that, I, I know it started out kind of small, what is it now?
Well, you know, there, there are people that come and go, they come and they play for a while and move away, or maybe they decide it isn't for them. But on a Sat, I mean, given Saturday, I'd say average number of people that show up is between twenty and twenty-five.
Wow, wow, impressive.
Real active, and they, they've become friends and they have potlucks and, and really do enjoy each other's company. So it's, it's really got a synergy about it that's fun to see. That's all I have.
Just a couple of quick updates, the middle school program, with the recreation program started just this past Tuesday where we have after school activities at the middle school. So this first week, everything getting started, we had over forty kids that signed up for different clubs and activities, everything from homework club to yoga and Legos and and a whole bunch of other stuff, so that's partnership and grant funded with the school district to help pay for some of the staffing costs to be over there and as well as some of the teachers.
My daughter went up there for an open gym, is that part of it too?
Yep, that is part of it, yep.
She went there to play volleyball.
Cool, yep, so yeah, we're looking forward to growing that program with the middle school, uh, as a partnership again with the school district. So Shawna and, of course I'll be here at the next meeting, but Shawna will be here at the next meeting as well to do a update for you on the recreation program where we're at. Kind of what we're looking at over the next couple of years that we have this, um, community fee that has begun. And to also talk to you, I wanted to get, we wanted to talk to you, to get your opinions of what success looks like for the rec program over these next two years to make sure that we are gearing everything that we're doing to meet your anticipation and your goals. So just please think about that over the next couple of weeks before we get here on the nineteenth to talk to you specifically about that. One thing I wanted to hopefully quickly show you, the internet works.
It's just very slow.
Computers will be replaced soon. Uh, I can give an IT update since we're waiting here though, uh, so we are, uh, pretty, um, Kathy, can you type in the city's address? Pretty up to date now after the hiatus we had and cleaned up from that and everything is back on board and, um, running so to speak. We just have a kind of a laundry list of little small items that we're taking care of as they come up and as we have time and staff availability to do that, so. But we are back fully up and functional, ninety-nine percent, so we were very lucky. And I will get together with Crystal and do an official press release that will talk about what happened, what we've done to mitigate the risks in the future and, and a lot of those items.
Probably a reminder to bring our computers in, is that correct?
Yes, well, you guys are due for a replacement for the Surface Pros anyways, um, so that's probably gonna be on the list this calendar year for sure. Along with a number of other additional things that'll, so. I did wanna let you guys know that I've been working the past several months on updating the website and kinda cleaning it up a little bit. So you might have noticed some, uh, small tweaks here and there with the menus and the way titles are presented. How departments are a little bit more cleaned up in here to make it a little bit more easier for the general public to use and find access to councilors and boards and committees. Community page was updated with a little bit more simple descriptions, direct links to the Discover Columbia County, Spirit of Halloween Town, Thirty Nights on the River. The live feed cameras that we have now, and history of the St. Helens was updated. I'm still working with the museum to update some of the pictures, a lot of the pictures that were on there, I found out were not even of St. Helens. So, um, he's helping me do that and going through, getting descriptions for all the pictures that are on there and everything. But business and development, I wanted to highlight just because I know we talked about the First Street intersection. We've added this section here for current city projects and that is an opportunity for you as a city council, if there are specific projects that you want identified on the website so that people have the ability to go see what the latest drawing is or what the latest update is. This is a great avenue to, for them to, for you to point them to. So if there's projects like the First Street project, whatever happens in the future on the waterfront, Public Works projects, any of that kind of thing. We can add those links and add a specific page to get that information out there, it's an easier way for you to point to, for people to go to instead of trying to.
I wanna change that, right below Chamber of Commerce, I wanted to read why not St. Helens? Why St. Helens?
I can make that happen. So one other thing that is a new feature to the website is this local business directory. So I took the two thousand eighteen business licenses and went one by one putting them into categories for everybody who had a business license within the city of St. Helens. So if you go down here and select, you know, a specific category, or you can, um, type in down here, you'll see an updated list with a map, phone number. If you are a business owner, you can go on here and add more information, that has to be approved, but you can add your logo to your business, you can add a website. You can add some additional information, this is just the basic information that we got. But this was kind of our initial first answer to why do you buy a business license in the city of St. Helens and where does that get you?
The hours and see if.
Are you looking for Rick Scholl escaping? You might be under a different category, I don't think I'm under retail.
Oh, no, I'm not retail. Nevermind.
I think you're under service. But you are listed there, as long as, as long as you have a business license, then you can, you can be listed there.
And don't forget to re-up your business license, what is it, is it already too late, are you already, uh, late?
Technically, yes, are you late, Mayor? Technically, yes, are you late, Mayor?
This is like two years in a row I've done this.
Well, you can do it now before you get the three months of late fees.
Yes, but I might as well wait till the end of the month now, because.
I will advise you to pay it whenever you can.
It's a short month.
It's twenty a month, right?
I believe so, yeah, it matches out at sixty dollars, I believe.
Yes, I paid forty last time, so I'm only paying twenty extra this time.
Uh, so, so please take some time and go through the website, see if there's any issues or things that you would like to add or things that you think should be helpful for the community to know, um, and please pass that information to me and I can get that onto the website. The only last thing I wanted to mention is that at the next meeting, myself and Jacob, John and the chief have all been working, uh, kinda behind the scenes on the police station study, so we're still moving on that, next meeting on the nineteenth, I will present, uh, myself and John and Brian will present to you the two options with the kind of the basic layout of parking spaces where the building is, um, you won't get to see any of the floor plan or anything, we're not there quite yet. That's, the goal is to show you these two sites, um, and get some direction and feedback of which one we should move forward with as one, so that we can do a more in-depth engineering, price costing, floor plans, all that kind of stuff. Uh, so you can be expecting that on the nineteenth at the next meeting, that's all I got.
Kathy? All right, Tina?
So I wanted to, uh, just go over a little bit of what I've been working on, I've been working with Casey Garrett on a, uh, presentation that he's put together for promoting Salmon Berry Recreation Area, and that's gonna be a, uh, trade show that he is going to, which is for ATVs and dirt bikes and that kind of thing. And we put together a backdrop for him to use as well as, um, some key components that he needs to make, uh, a professional presentation. And that's gonna be happening this weekend if anybody's in Portland. Also, I got, um, feedback from him on the, um, potential Rose Garden layout, which you've probably all kind of seen because it's been sitting on John's desk for a long time. And, um, he said that he really liked the design and, um, potentially would have some, um, help from the county on some of the key components to make this happen. And we're getting cost designs on, um, some of the materials that we would, um, recommend using. The, um, future vision of the stage might be, um, just having like afternoon trios or on the weekends and having not only oversized chess pieces, but also having the option of, um, bringing in some tables and chairs and having like little tiny concerts and, um, like during Thirteen Nights, it might be really cool of the teenagers, instead of congregating in places that we don't want them, this could be a place where they could do karaoke and things like that. And, um, a multiple of, you know, other opportunities to use that space. Um, one of the things that, uh, Casey is looking for is a potentially a spot for, um, transit pickup for pedestrians and so forth. Um, we had an emergency meeting that was very successful and, um, part of it, uh, tied into this new redone website for Discover Columbia County, where all of the cities are on there, and if you click on the directories dropdown, it also gives you a choice to go to the St. Helens Business Directory, which is the directory that Matt was just speaking of, so that will be extremely valuable for our business licensed people. And I've been sharing the word that I think we should do a major press release to let people know the good things that the city is doing on behalf of merchants and businesses. And, um, one of the things that we have upgraded on this particular site is that if you're a, uh, nonprofit, you can, as we mentioned before, you can submit to the site and it's absolutely free, so if you scroll down, you'll see some of the things that have come up, like the Scappus Library Book Sale and the Armani Center and the, uh, walking tour, but people can now go on that site and pretty much, um, upload the information themselves, which is very helpful for everybody. We're going to be adding to that, um, Explore Local, which is only a phone app, but it is for, specifically for people that are coming in from out of town. So they will be able to, um, easily navigate and find services, restaurants, hotels, motels, events, uh, businesses, and, um, and it's free to anybody who has a business license in St. Helens. This site will also, uh, be promoted at the new TED, or not new, because Portland is like in the top three in the country for TEDx. And, uh, the magazine that is, um, sponsoring TEDx, which means it will go into every person's bag that goes to any TEDx event in Portland, we will have a promotion in there for Explore Local and DiscoverColumbiaCounty.com. So I just wanted to encourage you to tell citizens and nonprofit groups that you work with, go take advantage of the fact that that website gets the most traffic of any place in Columbia County, and they could have their events on there for no fee. So we should encourage people to take advantage of that, and that's something, you know, that the city is paying for, so.
So each city has their site on there, right?
Yep.
Can they, can, if that be set up so they and only they can edit that particular, those pages?
Well, we just, if you go, if you go up to any of those, if you just click on City of Rainier, it takes you right to their pages. So of course they can update their pages as they see fit.
Can I, uh, do? What if they want their own tourism page, though?
Well, then they would direct it from their website.
Yeah, they could go.
I mean, it could be set up in this, that it could be, you can give, you know, them okay to just edit their pages and they're the only ones that could edit their pages?
They are the only ones that can edit their pages.
I mean, in, in this site itself.
Well, what would they edit, their logo?
I think Keith is talking about them each having a page on Discover Columbia County.
Yeah, they would need to contact us and we would come up with a price that, because we're paying for someone to sit there and make sure all that information is going up properly. So what, the, right now it's set up, so other businesses that are outside of St. Helens have to pay a little fee, but if a city wanted to just in groups, say, we want the same thing for all of our people on the, like, Explore Local app or something, then we could come up with a reasonable price and they could do that too, I mean, I, that's what I would do if I was a city, but I don't make those decisions for those guys.
See, that's the thing, right now they're thinking they want their home entire site, and I'm going, well, why would you do that, you know? We already have one that then gets all the information and all the hits anyway, so, yeah, why would you want a different site?
They like redundancy.
So, anyway, I, I just.
Yeah, I get it.
Questions to give them options next meeting.
Yeah, well, they, they're aware for sure, you know, that we.
I know what they're aware of, it's what they wanna do.
Well, what they wanna do is great and fine, except they don't really have any way to promote it, so it gets no traffic, so it's really, you know.
We need to report on that on our next city-county meeting.
Yeah, so, uh, anyway, if you're talking to any of the other, um, you know, cities or groups or anything like that, because the cities can put their own meeting, you know, their own events up there, free of charge, 'cause they're nonprofits.
Tina, I have a question, I noticed the Scappus Library Book Sale is February eighth, but below it is the Armani Center Race Against Child Abuse, it's April twenty-fifth. Is there any way to, uh, keep something that's further out into the future back up at the top so that it's not lost?
Well, I mean, you have to scroll down.
I understand, but I'm just saying.
It's by date, it's set up.
By the date that it's posted?
No, by the date that it happens.
Cause the one is February eighth and the other one is April.
That's my point, see?
So you don't have anything in between February?
Correct, correct, 'cause we just reloaded the whole website, yeah, so if you send us something.
Most current will be up top.
Exactly.
The most current will always be up top.
Yeah.
It wiped off as a good one.
Unless I specifically.
The fourteenth on there.
Yeah, I mean, people are not, we're not using it internally like we should be, honestly. So like, the, the police department should put all of their, you know, events that are coming up for the department. Yeah.
Got any job, Ryan? Crystal?
I mean, just so we know, since we're getting as much traffic as we are and because we're spending money on advertising, we really should be just driving everything to that site. To just keep that going, 'cause we're over seven hundred and fifty thousand visitors now, which is phenomenal. Yeah, that's good. So I'm gonna stop there.
John?
So before we completely leave tourism there, the Masonic Building is now loaded with.
I've seen that.
Some community service workers loaded all that stuff into the building.
Yesterday?
The windows displays are not the permanent solution there, they're, uh, there's been some complaints about it, so.
Was zombies?
Yeah, they put the zombies, I went over there, nothing to do with, we took some of the worst down and then we'll get, get the rest moved out of the.
I put a table in there and put them all around, playing poker around the table.
So we didn't talk about twenty twenty goals tonight, those goals are on your, uh, in the packet. Rachel is working on, um, doing a call-down interview with each councillor to try to, uh, speed up the process, having a more meaningful process and, you know, ideally we have the council goals in place to help inform the budget, budget priorities and things of that nature. Do our best to keep it moving along. And lastly, I wanted to note that Kyle hired Rachel, that she was on a six-month assignment, and I would like to propose that she, run her through at least the end of the fiscal year so we can have a decision as part of the budget and discuss that.
I think it's worth it. Anybody else, anybody else?
What are you doing?
Put Rachel to the end of the fiscal year.
When is that?
June third, yeah. New budget goes into effect July.
You want a vote or a head nod?
A head nod is just fine with me.
A head nod is okay.
Doing good things, being helpful and new in different ways and filling gaps.
Okay, um, do we wanna do council reports? Okay, we're gonna, we'll do them tonight. Okay, no executive session, so.
I would like to give an update. The next meeting, it doesn't matter.
We're outta here.
We'll get you back here at six-thirty. You, public carry real fast, fifteen minutes, it gets to this land down.